Director Nelson, there we go. All right, so officially called the meeting to orders. This is the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, January 25, 2022, here in Palm Desert and virtually. And I just want to start with some introductory remarks. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2021-43 in an effort to protect public health, prevent the spread of COVID-19, and because state and our local officials are recommending measures to promote social distancing, the public may view this board meeting online or virtually. The public may also attend the meeting in person. The meeting agenda is being livestreamed on the district's website, cvwd.org. And as stated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to comment on any item within the district, the jurisdiction of the district, or any item on the agenda may provide comments in person at the meeting or via Zoom. I believe we do have somebody wishing to make public comment this morning, so we'll make sure we give plenty of time for that. We will have two board members participating virtually today if we can get them both on. And so I'll make sure to call on them specifically as we move through the items and all of our roll call, all of our votes will be by roll call. All right. So would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Thank you. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. All right, so item three, do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda?
No, sir.
No, I'm not aware of any either. Public comment, this is the time set aside for public comment on any matter not appearing on the agenda or any item on the consent calendar. Please address the board at the podium, limit your remarks to three minutes, and if you wish, state your name and address for the record. And we will have opportunity for public comment as appropriate, both at the public hearing, which is on the agenda, and as other specific action items come up on the agenda. So we do have some public comment, I believe?
We do. President Powell, we have one member in the audience, Mr. Michael Nowacki.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Michael Nowacki. My residence is at the Oasis Country Club, just down the street here. At the January 11th public hearings, I spoke in the public's comments section of this mail-only board meeting. I then supplemented those remarks with a document that it was distributed to the board, but for some reason, despite my request to those in attendance today, they were not providing comments that were made. Your link to the public letters is incorrect in your agenda because it fails to note my comments to the board as public correspondence. My request on January 11th at the public hearing was a simple one. In light of a potential investment in the replacement of the irrigation system at the Oasis golf course, which has eliminated the water district employees from appearing at the Oasis Town Hall Zoom call that has been moved to February 24th, I requested this board place on the agenda today my request to order three employees to appear before the Oasis Country Club members via Zoom or in person to answer questions independent from the Oasis Irrigation Committee, who has provided access to at least one of those people, only you Bennett. I do want to say that it is unfortunate that the rules here are not followed any better than what they are at the Oasis. The agenda of today's meeting contains no mention of my request. In a tersely worded email from the general manager, James Barrett, received on the afternoon of January 10th, he indicated that he was informed that the January 18, 2022 Oasis Country Club Town Hall had been canceled, and that unidentified by-name individuals from the HOA had informed no water district employees were needed to appear. Ironically, at 3:00 PM on that date of January 10th, no Oasis members had been informed of the cancellation of that town hall, but two hours later, it did. Mr. Barrett's information was a false narrative that the meeting was canceled because at 5:09, the meeting was postponed to February 24th. A public records request was filed regarding how did Mr. Barrett get informed that such a meeting had been canceled, and the public records response yielded there were no responsive records to my request. Did Mr. Barrett get contacted by the association, or did he initiate that call to get erroneous information that the town hall had been canceled and then send an email to me containing such heresy or hearsay? Which one was it, Mr. Barrett? So how did Mr. Barrett find out his erroneous information? And why did this board ignore my request and dock it for today's agenda, my requests? Inquiring minds want to know that answer now. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else wishing to make public comment at this time?
Mr. President, we don't have any others in the room. I would ask that if there are any of the participants online on Zoom, if you would please use the raised hand feature, and we will call on you. Give that a minute. I don't see any of the attendees using the raised hand feature.
Okay. Well, if you see anyone, you know, we can accommodate that. So let's see, onto the consent calendar, items 5A through G. Do we have a motion to approve? I'll make the motion to approve. One second. Just wanted to give those attending online an opportunity if there was any need to pull an item.
Mr. President, if I may, Director Nelson, if you can accept the invite that you will see on your screen to promote you to a panelist, that will give you the full ability to speak at any time.
And I don't have any comments or questions on the consent calendar.
Yeah, okay, thanks. So we've lost Peter, I think. Director Nelson, are you communicating with us?
Yeah, so yeah, I've accepted four or five times that invitation.
Okay, that's, it wasn't accepting it for some reason. Okay, you're back on, thank you.
All right, so we have, I just wanted Director Nelson to make sure you didn't have a consent calendar item that needed to be pulled.
Oh, thanks, President Powell, I'm good with the consent.
All right, so with a motion and a second, a roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We had seven ayes there. All right, that passed five zero. On to presentations and recognitions, and we have a number of them today. I believe we have two present, but just to note those that may not be in attendance, we have a couple of anniversaries. Eric Gentry with 20 years, Robert Mesa also with 20 years, and there's a nice write-up on Robert in the packet. And then we have, we'll have another anniversary, but he's here, so we'll do that. Armando Pacheco with 20 years, and then retirements, we have got Lupi Sandoval, who's not attending, at 18 years, Ken Gray at 15 years, and then Alan Bessie with 16 years. So let's get on with Armando Pacheco, his 20-year anniversary. Armando is a true asset for CVWD. He's been in the mechanical department for 17 years and has become a highly skilled technician who can service various types of equipment. Armando is extremely self-motivated and is a role model for others trying to keep up with his pace. He has a sincere and genuine personality and can work with anybody. With his business sense and understanding of treatment operations requirements, he evaluates time-sensitive equipment for rapid economical repairs with no interruption of service to our customers. One of the highlights in Armando's career was helping domestic water with arsenic removal sites. Equipment there was leaking hydraulic oil, and outside company gave a quote for thousands of dollars to repair the system. Armando read the factory tech manual and jumped in. Within a few hours, he identified the problem. The system pressure was too high, causing the fittings to leak, and in two days made the necessary repairs and saved the district thousands of dollars. Armando never says no and always responds to any task with "you got it." We are very lucky to have him on our team and look forward to many more years working with him. And we will ask Armando to come up. We have one more who's here, Alan Bessie, with the retirement after 16 years. As Alan goes into the next chapter in his life, we're losing a talented, skilled technician with an unbelievable work ethic. He will be near to impossible to replace. Alan learned his skills in the trades program in Canada, where he worked in heavy equipment shops where the temperature could drop to 50 below. Here, he worked in the desert where it was a hot 125 degrees and never complained. One of Alan's strongest traits was his adaptability to change. He said, "Yes, I know a lot, but I don't know everything. We have a job to do." He was a caring person who treated everyone with respect and compassion regardless of rank. With five treatment plants and 27 lift stations, keeping track of everything is no small undertaking. Alan collected data for the new asset management program, helped streamline paperwork to make sure they make the office more efficient, and assisted in keeping 11 technicians motivated to perform daily tasks. He would come to work 45 minutes early to make coffee for the guys and get the daily paperwork done to start off each day. There's a saying in the mechanical department that we have a job that nobody wants, but only a few can do. That is what Alan stood for. As Alan departs, he leaves a legacy of higher standards with big shoes to fill. Thank you for everything that you've done, Alan. And both of you guys, come on up and we'll take some pictures. You want separate pictures? You want to do it together? We'll take time to do this, go. So now we give you guys an opportunity if you want to say. You don't have to.
Sure, I'm a native in the Peral Valley. My dad really got on, he got to work hard and put through a good career. Been great. Mostly known as a storm, I did 16 years at Aren't They. Was an amazing job, I own my knowledge there, and bounced over to the water district and it's been even better.
We're happy to have you. You did come from the Arnie side. It's hard to me to kind of say, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I started off on a canal crew irrigation and learned quite a bit about our non-podable water and all our irrigation for the valley. Now, when it's electric job, I work on domestic pumps. But my calling is with sanitation, mechanical department. It gave me a good enough challenge to make me want to come to work every day. I was proud to work here, and mechanical shop was always the best family to work for when I was here. And I'll take care of you.
So. I thought I saw Andy here, too. Thanks, Andy.
Thanks for coming by.
All right, so we're moving into the public hearing here. At this time, staff will provide a presentation on the 2020 census data and the redistricting of Coachella Valley Water District division boundaries as required by Election Code Section 22000. Following the presentation, we will open the public hearing.
Okay, so I will start there. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I will do a quick intro just into the item, and then Jeremy Holmes with BBK will take over the presentation. He'll review the different data, go over the two map options that we have put together for today. So part of the requirements for redistricting is that special districts are required to hold two hearings, one to consider a map and the second to approve. The map, this first hearing will meet our first requirement of holding the first hearing. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Jeremy Holmes.
Good morning, Board of Directors, members of the public. You know, my name is Jeremy Holm. I'm an associate with Best Western Krieger, and we're the redistricting consultant for the Coachella Valley Water District. As the clerk mentioned, we're here today to present a couple of map options, and we've prepared a presentation to provide a bit of an update on how this process is going and also to refresh the memories of the board and the public regarding some of the requirements that go into the redistricting process. Next slide, please. So again, today, we're going to be holding a public hearing to discuss the presentation of two draft maps. You know, we're going to remind what the project timelines is, how members of the public can participate, and of course, go over the overall deadline for when this process needs to be completed. Next slide, please. So just to provide a refresher, just in case members of the public are unaware, board members for the district hold four-year terms, and these terms are staggered so that districts one, three, and five are elected in November of 2022, that's this year, and districts two and four have terms that are elected in November 2024. Next slide. So with the redistricting process, again, the ultimate goal is to redraw the current division boundaries based on census data. We're off to a bit of a late start that due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, the US census was delayed. So this entire process has been delayed by a few months, but there's still plenty of time to get this accomplished before the statutory deadline. So in terms of the actual process itself, you know, you hold an initial pre-draft meeting, you know, it's held prior to the release of the draft maps, and you know, we're seeking to provide education and to solicit input from the community before we prepare additional draft maps. You know, this is done to identify certain neighborhoods and communities of interest. Community of interest is a bit of a defined term where it's just a common area that has similar interests. So that could be residents that are living within a certain segment of a school district, et cetera. And we initially held a pre-draft meeting going over this entire process back in November of 2021. And again, at that time, we just provided a brief overview of the process and sought some input if there was any. So as part of this process, the members of the public can submit draft maps for consideration. In terms of the timeline for discussing those, any map submitted will be discussed at the second public hearing that takes place in March, a specific date toward the end of the presentation here. And again, as the clerk mentioned, for special districts, the requirement is to hold two public hearings, the first of which is going to be held today. And finally, so when, after all this is said and done, and the board of directors have selected a map option, the map is adopted via ordinance or resolution and has to be posted at least seven days prior to the adoption of the map. Next slide, please. So in terms of criteria that go into the redrawing of the districts, revised electoral districts must be substantially equal in population, and this is a requirement of the US Constitution. Specifically, this population balance must comply with the US Constitution, the California Constitution, the Federal Voting Rights Act. And it's, the population equality is based on the total population of district residents, not customers, as calculated by the US Census Bureau. So in adjusting the boundaries for divisions, there's also a couple of California criteria that come into effect as well. So the board can give consideration to the following factors. The topography, you know, if there's a river or a specific natural landmark where it makes sense to create a boundary for. The geography, that references whether or not an area is rural or urban. And then there's this cohesive, contiguous integrity, compactness of the territory. That goes into how the districts are drawn. Ultimately, they want to, the way the law is phrased is that districts need to be drawn in more compact way instead of a long, skinny way. It's better to have a central area where the district radiates out of. And then community interests as well, which is mentioned, which was mentioned a bit earlier, which involves certain populations that might have similar interests. Again, this can be, my go-to example is a school district. So if a citizen is located within the boundaries for a certain school district, it would make sense to make sure that all those, that population is completely in one district in order to make sure that their voices are heard as a group in terms of providing, you know, assistance from elected officials. So in terms of a couple of just rules, so the boundaries can't be drawn to favor or discriminate against a political party, that's gerrymandering. This mostly comes up at a national level, usually not too many problems here at a local level. And the change of boundaries can't affect the unexpired term of office for any elected board member. Next slide, please. So here's the map of the districts as they're currently drawn. We're going to talk about the data again as to why this whole process is necessary. Next slide, please. So the way that the data broke down in the 2020 census, essentially, the 2020 census data shows that the district's divisions are no longer population balanced. So the district's population is just over 355,000. So when we're drawing districts, we want to get each division as close to an ideal division population. In this case, you calculate that number by dividing the total district population by the amount of divisions. So in this case, it'd be five. So based on that, the ideal division population is just over 71,000. So in terms of redrawing the maps, that's the ultimate goal here, is to make sure that the districts are, to make sure that the divisions are close to that 71,000 mark. So when you determine the population balance, it's done by measuring the spread, also known as the deviation, between the least populated division and the greatest populated division located within the political entity. So deviations of 10% or less are generally considered acceptable under US Supreme Court rulings. And again, that's exactly where the need to redraw districts is coming in. So the current population of Division Five is under the ideal division population. Specifically, there's a spread of about 6.39%. Division Four is also considerably over this ideal number as well, at about 13.26%. You know, combine those deviations, bring the district's current total deviation to 19.65%. You know, as a result, the division boundaries are required to be adjusted to achieve a population balance with less than a 10% deviation to avoid any potential constitutional issues. Another consideration is the distribution of minority voters throughout the agency, or throughout the district, I should say, and whether there's a possibility of creating a majority-minority voting district as addressed in the Federal Voting Rights Act. So, you know, again, as part of this redistricting process, you know, we reviewed the ethnicity demographics from the census data, specifically looking at citizens of voting age population, and that's what that C-VAP references in this table here. You know, upon review of the district's C-VAP data, creation of a majority-minority voting district is possible. So again, the name describes exactly what it is. So it's a division in which an identified minority comprises the majority of voting age population. And again, it's possible because currently divisions four and five are majority-minority Hispanic voting districts based on the data. So when we're redrawing maps, another area of consideration is to preserve those majority-minority Hispanic districts. Next slide, please. Again, this just summarizes what I've just said, that we're above the acceptable range at 19.65%. We can draw, again, we can draw majority-minority districts because the district currently has majority-minority districts. Next slide. So draft maps. So as initially directed here, we wanted to make sure that we weren't making substantial changes. So as a result, we prepared two map options for the board's consideration. Ultimately, the way that these were made here were to preserve the core of the existing districts by altering the fringes or the boundaries in order to achieve that population balance. We're going to have a Google tool that will let the board and the public see the distinctions between the map options and the original boundaries. But in terms of just this presentation for now, we're to discuss the data and just really try to provide a brief overview before we go into the nitty-gritty looking at that Google tool. So again, map option number one seeks to retain the core of the existing divisions. You know, ultimately here, we don't want to make drastic changes, especially since, you know, ultimately the goal is to achieve substantial population balance. So next slide, please. So looking at the demographic data for this first map option, so the total population deviation of this map is 3.2% compared to the 19.65% for the current boundary map. You know, as you can see here, based on the total population, there's been a number of minor changes made to the boundaries in order to get each division closer to that 71,000 mark. And importantly, this also preserves existing majority-minority districts in divisions four and five in compliance with the US Constitution and the California Elections Code. And again, we're talking about that compactness factor with the California criteria, based on how the district's boundaries were originally drawn. There was an opportunity there to make slightly more compact voting districts with this minor population rebound, so especially with regards to divisions two, three, and four, which we'll showcase in a bit greater detail in a little bit. Next slide, please. Again, that's just summarizes what I just talked about. So we have standard deviation of 3.21%, we preserve the majority-minority Hispanic districts, and we've created some more compact districts. Next slide. Next slide. The map option two, again, relies with the showcase of the, the map options on the PowerPoint slide, you know, it's very difficult to tell what the differences between the two of them are. Again, we're going to have a, a Google map tool to showcase how they're different. But you know, as, as you can see just at a first glance, the map options themselves are not drastically different from each other. With regards to this second map option here, this one was made as a potential option to, to achieve a population rebound while preserving the existing district's boundaries to a, a greater level. So under this option, this prioritizes the least amount of voter shift. Naturally, it's one of the main issues with redrawing maps is you could potentially have a, a voter located in one district, you know, and especially with an election coming up in 2022, where you can potentially move them to a district that doesn't vote in 2024, and it can cause a, you know, a number of issues where, you know, essentially like a voter would go to the polls and basically be informed that, oh, you're like, you're, you're not in, in this division anymore, so you can't vote, unless you gotta wait a couple more years. So this map option seeks to retain the existing boundaries as much as po, as much as possible, and again, achieve the population rebounds through some minor edits to the fringes or the boundaries of the divisions. Next slide. With regard to the, the demographic data, again, as you can see, each division's been adjusted to get closer to that 71,000 ideal population mark. The total deviation is about 3.45%, you know, we're well, well under that 10% range that we would like to in order to protect the district from any potential constitutional issues. And again, Divisions Four and Five are still majority-minority voting districts under this map option as well, so those have been preserved. And, but in terms of compact voting districts, with this one, this tended to, to make Divisions Three and Four a, a bit more compact. Next slide. And again, this is just a summary. So we're at 3.45%, Districts Four and Five are preserved as majority-minority Hispanic districts, you know, slightly more compact voting districts here, but as compared to map option one, while it is subtle, this one seeks to preserve the core of the existing districts and minimize voter shift. Next slide. So in terms of information and, and input that we're seeking with regards to the map, so, you know, we're, we're going to take a look at board input, public input, any staff expertise, demographic data. Ultimately, the goal after the public hearing today is based on public comments and board input. We would like some direction on how to proceed with the draft maps. For instance, it's possible that there may be certain revisions requested upon review of, of these maps upon discussion that come up. Or, for instance, the, the board may find one of the map options a, a bit more suitable for, to move forward with to the second public hearing. For instance, if the board finds that map option two, since it seeks to make more minimal adjustments, that might be the option to consider going forward. That, that case will, we could, you know, stop working on the, the first map option and proceed on the, the second map option and, and present that again when the second public hearing comes up in March. Next slide. So again, the public hearing provides opportunity for the public to review and comment on the draft maps. And as I mentioned, following this meeting, BBK will draw revised maps if that's the direction that the board wants to go with, or work on a single map option, again, if that's the direction the board wants to go with. Next slide. So in terms of the timeline, again, this slide will provide, this provides information about the process moving forward. You know, today's the first public hearing, we're going to get that first level of public input on these proposed draft maps. So the second hearing is scheduled for March, March 8, 2022. So there's a bit of time between the first and the second hearings. Again, special districts, unlike cities, only have to conduct two public hearings. The, the cities have a, a whole slew of other requirements, such as Fair Map Acts, where they have to conduct four public hearings, so it's a lot more stringent set of requirements. But for special districts, it, it's a, a bit of a benefit that the requirements are lesser. So we're, come back on March 8, again, to review any, with some map provisions if requested, and to review any maps moved by the public. And then April 17, 2022 is the district deadline to adopt and submit maps to the county register of voters. And then finally, you know, the election happens in November 22, so this process will happen very quickly. Next slide, I think that's it. And then, can you pull up the Google map tool?
Sure. Hey Jeremy, and if I may add just a date in there, the April 17 is the deadline for the district. Should the board not adopt a map on March 8, our final opportunity to, for the board to adopt that would be at the April 12 hearing to meet the deadline, April 17.
Good, thank you. This is the time and place for a public hearing to allow for public testimony and comments regarding CBW's proposed division boundaries. Excuse me. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Does anyone attending this public hearing wish to be heard? Please give your name and address, and let me your remarks to three minutes.
If we have members in Zoom as attendees, please use the raise hand feature if you'd like to provide comment during this public hearing.
Nothing.
Again, for those via Zoom, if you would like to provide a comment for this public hearing, please use the raise hand feature.
And while we're waiting for that, I just want the record to show that there are no members of the public other than staff present in the room here, in the boardroom.
Correct, and I don't see any raised hand.
Okay. Have we received any written communications?
We have not missed, we have not received any written communications. I was just checking the email. So the district in an effort to try and encourage public comments and participation, we did create a email specifically for redistricting, which we have monitored and up to date have not received any comments via email as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then, there being no further input, I hereby declare the public hearing closed. The board will now take up discussion and provide direction to staff regarding the proposed division boundary adjustments and potential maps to be considered at the second public hearing. And... Yeah, March 8. Those attending, perhaps we'll give priority to those attending virtually. Director Nelson, any input, questions?
And if the board would like, not to cut Mr. Nelson off, but we can do, so we brought up this map, and we can show, Yolanda, if you can click on option one, just to show. It shows the existing versus what the new boundaries would look like for option one. The black lines are the existing boundary lines, and so you could see the majority of the changes are made here in Division Four, some changes to Division Three. I don't, I don't have a pointer, so I apologize, but if, and then you can see the change also in, between two and four, up north of the 10 freeway, and then up also for Division One.
Right.
And then...
You know, it's kind of interesting too, because like, just looking at Division Three, there's a big chunk of, that, that was added to it on the west side, but I'm guessing that's all mountains. I don't think there's any people in there, right? I mean...
Correct.
Just based on what, it's kind of hard to tell, but maybe there's a little tiny bit of population at the very north part of that new area there. But just from my, these maps are really hard to tell.
I can, I can, I can comment on, on that as well. So just in terms of, there can be a, a bit of a, a weird aspect of drawing these division lines. So when the U.S. Census Bureau releases data, they release the data via census block, so they kind of basically compile certain areas into census blocks. And what that means is, when we're getting this released data, we don't necessarily have the, the data on a per neighborhood basis, so we, we rely on the census block. So that can be a possib, a possibility here, that there might have been a census block that extended below that division line in Division Three, you know, that sort of cut into that mountain area. So that, that would be one of the reasons why, even though this area doesn't necessarily have population, there, there might be a small portion of the census block that included in there, and it would just made more sense to draw the lines in that way.
And so just looking at the data, and Jeremy, you can correct me, but it looks like District Three went from 67,169 to about 70,947, so an increase of about 3,700 in population for Division Three. So not too much there.
No, and it's probably mostly in that little trapezoidal-looking piece, or triangular piece on the, next to Indio up there. I bet you that's where most of those people are. Yeah.
Thanks. If I could just get a, a link to the Google map, I'd appreciate that. Otherwise, I don't have any further comments. It all looks like we're in a good process.
Sure, I'll be happy to send that.
I'd like a link to that, too. Yeah.
So I actually, I'll resend it. I sent it last week sometime, but I'll resend that.
That's right. I think it's in the board packet, too.
It is, but I, I sent it directly to the board after I posted the agenda, but I will definitely resend that.
Yeah, good, good.
And then, Yolanda, just if you can, unclick Option One and click Option Two, just so they can see as well what that looks like. And you see the, the change really, I think, is up in Three and Four, where this option, boundaries are a little different there, and you kind of see that towards the bottom of Four.
Yeah, a little, little areas there.
I can send the email now. She sent it on the third.
Vice President Estrada, did you have any?
I got one, the first one was wrong.
Input here?
Thursday.
Oh, you just sent it on Thursday?
I can resend it.
There was one that went out on Wednesday.
I'm not hearing any. Is he on? I didn't, I didn't hear anything.
Director Estrada, did you have any comments or any feedback? To provide?
The only feedback I have, I, I think, you know, I, I like both maps, and I was looking as, as at map one as the better option just because of the deviation being lower, but, but I think they're both, I don't have any real picture.
Just sent the email.
And, and again, I think, and Jeremy can reiterate, that there, there really is not significant changes between one and two. The, if we would say the benefit to, option two is just, as Jeremy had mentioned, that we try and stay within the boundaries as much as possible from an elections perspective. As he mentioned, it does make a difference. Having been in the election field before, one of the biggest complaints we would have when any boundaries were changed is that individuals would go to vote at the next coming election, and they're told they're no longer voting at that location, that they're not eligible for this election, and that really causes a lot of frustration and confusion for the voter. So that's just something to, to keep in mind as well.
Can we get a number, that, or maybe it's in here and I'm not seeing it, that, that tells exactly how many people? I, I know that the numbers haven't changed very much, it's, it's just a little bit, but the amount of people who moved from one district to another, maybe bigger than what we're thinking, where, where we... Yeah.
No, yeah, I get it. So, 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 so in Division Two, okay, there's a lot of people who were in Division Two that are now, are going to be in Division One. And then in Division Four, there was a lot of people that were in Division Four that are now going to be in Division Two. So I just wanted to know what, how many numbers those were.
You know, I wonder if, if you can do that by tagging each of these areas that changed with a number, right? So like, where it says Sky Valley up there, these are folks that moved from Two into One. Just how many people are in that area that's moving?
Jeremy, are we able to do that? Is, is a demographer able to do that?
The demographer will be able to do that. I don't exactly have the, the data on hand right now, but that is something that we could present a lot more clear data on at, at the second public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, maybe just tag each of those parts that are changed, and, and we can tabulate for each one, and then totals for each division, how many people moved. Because I'm kind of curious, too. Some of them look really small, but there may be a lot of people in some of those little, tiny little areas.
If we look at, the majority really was in Division Four, where they had seen the largest increase in population, so we had to really take, a lot of it was taking the, that population, that increase in, in Division Four, and distributing that into the others to make everything equal.
Yeah, and they gave, they, it looks like on this option, they gave to three different areas there. Yeah, okay.
Can you...
But although, some of those areas didn't need any people, so you're, you're, it's, you know, it's, 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 it's a little odd the way it's done.
Well, well, yeah, but you're kind of, you're kind of stuck, because like, if Two, if, if Four gives to Two, then Two has too many, right? So then they had to give to One.
Right.
But One needed them anyways. They had to get them from somewhere. I mean, the only place One's going to get them from is Two.
Yeah.
So what we can do is, we can, we'll create some type of chart that shows what the existing population was for opt, for the existing population versus Option One versus Option Two, and then show where the numbers, where, how many moved from one divi, were moved from one division to the next.
That'd be nice.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, my, my input is, I think it's pretty good. It seems to maintain some integrity to these existing divisions while, while still meeting, more than meeting that 10% requirement. It looks reasonable to me. I, I don't have a strong feeling between One and Two. I mean, maybe we let, you know, if there's, if there is public input, maybe we let that happen between now and March 8, and that could help inform decisions about things.
And, and just for the record, the district did, we are, we are only required to do, you know, the two hearings and do the notice. We, we noticed in the paper, we created the webpage on the district to allow for input. We also used communication staff to send out a press release, to do multiple social media posts and so forth. So we really did an effort to try and engage the public and receive public input and ensure that this process is transparent as possible.
Yeah, interesting, okay. Good.
Yolanda, can you just, I just want to see if you can see, can you click Option One as well, have all three, so you can kind of see what those, and you, it's really hard to tell just because of the coloring scheme, but that has the existing Options One and Two as well.
Yeah.
Any changes around Four and Two?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's sort of, yeah, that little bubble around Four is all the differences. Okay.
So the board direction would be to return at the next hearing with the two maps, and to see if public comment is received in the interim in regard to one or both of those maps. Two, return with the information requested about specifically where voters went to from one division to another.
Yeah, yeah, how many are in each of those moved areas, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
All right.
Okay, all right, well, Jeremy, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you for the time.
And so we've already closed the public hearing, as far as I remember, right? All right, we're good. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Onto 9A, we, it looks like we had some additional written communications, there's a total of three compared to what was in the board packet. I think there was only one there. So, and it looks like they're all resolved. We have some other informational items. BI is discussing the proposed $50 million bond and fixed rate note. I mean, I, I'll tell you, I, I was shocked when I saw this item come up. I don't know that we've ever seen anything like this, but go ahead, Carrie. Good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, sorry, and members of the board. So this is an informational item.
Is your mic on? Could you move a little closer?
Oh, sorry.
So this is an informational item to discuss the additional financing needed to support the North India Regional Flood Control Project and the Storm Water Channel Improvement Project under the Storm Water Fund. I will be providing a quick background summary, and then I will hand it over to our financial consultant, Darren Hodge from PFM, who's joining us remotely. And he will be providing the information related to the two financing plans. And in addition, we also have Douglas Brown, our bond counsel from Stradling, available for, on the line as well in the event you have any legal-related questions. So about two years ago, in January twenty twenty, the district finally executed an agreement with Environmental Protection Agency after working with them for two years to avail of the loan financing program under the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovative Act, which is most popular known as the WIFIA loan program. So at the time, the total estimated cost of both projects was approximately a little over a hundred and twenty million dollars. The WIFIA was going to provide us forty-nine percent of the total cost as a loan of a hundred ninety-six basis points or 1.96% for thirty-five years. And the district was going to utilize our existing reserves to finance approximately sixty-one and a half million dollars in Pega reserves for, to complete the project. However, in the last two years, with the pandemic, increasing material costs and construction costs, that new estimated cost has significantly increased from a hundred and twenty million to a hundred and eighty million. So back in September, we did award the project, construction project for the North Indio. On the BAI, attached is the detailed breakdown of the project increase. And with that, we have now determined that we need to do additional financing for the additional increase of sixty point one million dollars. So in conjunction, working with PFM and the bond council, and of course, the engineering department, we have come up with two financing plan. The first one is to provide the long-term plan, which is about fifty million dollars. And then we're also evaluating a potential interim financing of fifty-nine million to kind of bridge that gap. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Darren Hodge to provide more details on the two financing plans.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, and good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you. So as Carrie mentioned, the first item that we're going to be looking at in the proposed plan of finance today is a fifty million dollar long-term fixed-rate bond to finance a portion of the cost increases on the two projects. In today's markets, we are anticipating that if these bonds were sold as fixed-rate bonds over thirty years as level debt service, the debt service associated with this fifty million dollar bond issuance would be about two point seven million dollars per year. The bonds would be secured, the same as the WIFIA loan, with property tax revenues on the same lien. And in addition, for this transaction, we would need to procure a financing team, and so we would anticipate going out through a competitive RFP process to secure underwriter, underwriters to assist us in the sale and marketing of these bonds. The second component to the plan of finance is a potential short-term note issuance. And the note issuance would effectively be a financing for a portion of the remaining project cost unassociated with the cost increase, and so I'll break that down a little bit more detail. So in two thousand twenty, we entered into a WIFIA loan for about fifty-nine million dollars. The plan of finance for that WIFIA loan called for the project cost through June of two thousand twenty-two to be financed with draws on our existing Bank of the West facility. And then in June, the anticipation was to draw on the WIFIA loan to take out the Bank of the West line of credit. And then in two thousand twenty-three, draw on the remainder of the WIFIA loan, and from there on, we would be paying debt service on the WIFIA loan. We have a potential opportunity at this point, just given where short-term interest rates are, that instead of drawing on the WIFIA loan in June of two thousand twenty-two, this year, as originally anticipated, we can potentially issue short-term notes to take out the Bank of the West draws, as well as finance next year's anticipated draws on the WIFIA loan. What would then be anticipated is that the WIFIA loan would be drawn on in either June or November of two thousand twenty-three to refund the note that was issued. The benefit of this approach is that our WIFIA loan is at an interest rate of 1.89%. So if we drew on the WIFIA loan in today's market, we would be paying interest at 1.89% for the next year. If we issue notes, potentially if we're able to issue those at a lower rate, we would be paying less interest over the next year. Another potential benefit is that as long as we have not drawn the WIFIA loan, in many circumstances, EPA, if the rates are lower, has been amenable to allowing borrowers to refinance their loan at lower rates. And so by issuing the note, we delay the initial draw on the WIFIA loan, which potentially preserves that option. This second note component, this would only be issued if it was economic to do so at time of pricing. And so as of right now, we are projecting it to be economic, but obviously subject to market conditions over the next several months. Timing-wise, we are anticipating that we would obviously bring this back for board approval of the financing document. But in terms of the pricing and closing, right now, we're looking at either a late April or early May timeframe for both sale of the notes and bonds as well as closing with them. With that, I'll pause and open it up to any questions that I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any.
President Powell, could I add one other piece of information? So recently, we had our WIFIA loan instrument AAA rating reaffirmed by Fitch. That's a good thing. That was done two years ago. And obviously, when we're entering into new financings, that doesn't mean we would get a AAA rating again, but we would definitely be making the pitch to whoever's rating, whatever instruments we're going with, that we already have a AAA rating on the WIFIA loan.
Right. Can you explain to me a little bit about the cost? I mean, so we had a bid, or those were our estimates, and then when we got a bid, this is where it came out? Or how did that work?
That's correct. So the estimated was, you know, the estimated cost at the time where the project construction cost was, the actual bid did not happen for the stormwater until November of two thousand twenty. And then the North India one was sent out to bid in April, and we got the bid in August. So by the time the actual bid came out, it was higher than what was originally estimated. And I do have David Wilson, if you have more specific questions.
So let me back up. So the bid, that's fifty-some million over, we got that bid in August.
In August, and it went to board in September.
Board in September. Carrie.
President Powell, I have a question.
Go ahead. Director Estrada.
So Carrie, what you're saying is that the bid that you got in August came to us in September was already over, or are they asking for an adjustment or a change order, or what?
It was already over the original estimated cost that we applied for a loan for. So that was the final cost that was approved. And I think part of that, I don't know if you want to explain it further, but it's the material cost that's costing.
Carrie, so when, so you're saying you brought the award of contract to us in September, and we approved that, we approved that contract with that, with those numbers there?
Yes. It was including the increase that the cost was higher than what was originally estimated when we applied for the loan under WIFIA. Because we started the application process with WIFIA in two thousand eighteen, and it took about two years to get the final executive agreement, which was not until two thousand twenty. And at that time, the pricing, when I believe you evaluated it, was still about the same. But from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, the cost has just tremendously increased. And I think from what I recall, the bid for the North India was even delayed, hoping that the pricing would readjust or go down. But it did not, it still kind of stayed at that level. And if you want to add more, David?
Yeah, and the only reason I bring it up is I don't recall, you know, it's such a big change, and I don't recall us having a conversation about it being over.
Vice President Estrada, this is David Wilson. Good morning. I do recall, as part of that award, a discussion from finance that, back to you all, to bring up a method for addressing the variance during that board meeting. But if I may discuss the variance. When we originally applied for this WIFIA loan, it was back in two thousand eighteen. We were tasked at the time, the project wasn't quite ready, but we were, there was an impetus to phase the project out to allow it to align with the construction of a Demony development. So we phased it out, and it was also coincidental with that timing was to get some funding for the project. We had a construction cost estimate at that time, dated roughly late two thousand seventeen, and that was the estimate that we went in with, with the WIFIA folks. During that time, there were additional costs associated with modifying the construction plans to address the phasing of the project. We were still working through the land acquisition. There were issues related to land acquisition. The Spina Development relocated their entrance, for example, which increased the size of boxes and changed the rectangular storm channel sizing. We had some things that popped up with Sun City Palm Desert, Sun City Shadow Hills, as it relates to the inlet and outlet structures. The city of Indio built a signal lighting, installed signal lighting at one of the intersections that we were going through in spite of the fact that they knew we were going through there. They also widened portions of Avenue Thirty-Nine to put in curb and gutter, which also impacted our design. So there were, there were some changes that went on in the interim. We're having to pay for MOB twice now because of the phasing, MOB and DMOB. The sequencing with the city of Indio for the five roadway crossings, the Indio had quite a few restrictions related to how we could do shutdowns or road closures, and the timing of each, so it didn't impact the transportation needs of the community in the area. Those all played a role in the cost, how it went up. And then, of course, it was compounded by the fact that we had the pandemic and material costs that went up. This project is concrete-rebar intensive. It's a concrete channel, and concrete and rebar have gone up as much as thirty percent and are expected to go up even higher over the past year and a half or so. Fuel prices, last year while this bidding was going on, diesel fuel, which is, plays a big role in excavation. They'll be using scrapers out here, about twenty percent of the job is excavation, twenty percent of the job cost. And diesel fuel was up two hundred percent last year. And the volatility of the market forces the contractors to hedge, so that raises the prices. We had multiple requests from contractors to tie some of the costs to an index, which we were unwilling to allow. We didn't think that was in our best interest to do that. I think we mentioned that when we went to award. And in addition to that, we have insurance costs, insurance, the insurance market, the volatility of that was, played a heavy role with the bidders. We had issues with folks trying to get insurance. In fact, it took us some time to get this contractor to finally get the insurance closed up once we had it awarded. They had to go through multiple carriers to be able to line it up, and they ended up paying more for the insurance than they had put on the bid. So it was a series of factors, kind of a, I guess, a perfect storm, if you will, that raised the costs up here.
I mean, are we too far down the line to put this project on hold for a year to see if?
Well, we are tied, we are tied with the WIFIA folks in order to maintain the funding to have it completed by two thousand twenty-three, August, I believe, in two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah.
So I would offer, yes. I would offer, if it helps, this is a key component of flood management and the north side of Interstate Ten. As you know, the cities of North Theater City, Thousand Palms, North India area, the burden to have any development in those regions is high from a cost perspective because of the flood hazards that are in those areas. And so this, long-term wise for the community, does play a huge benefit.
Fifty, fifty-some million dollars is going to take away from something else, big time. That's the problem with this.
Yeah, it's a big head. I have a couple of questions. So please, so the interest rate that you're talking about on the notes, you said would be less than the amount of the, than the rate on the WIFIA loan. Now, that WIFIA loan rate's already at like 1.98 or something. So what is the note rate?
So the note preliminary numbers was a coupon of 1% and about forty-seven percent yield. That's for the short-term note. And for the long-term bond note, Darren, please help me with that one. I think it was about a little over two or three.
Yeah, so right now, Director, in response to your question, the long-term bond for thirty years in today's market, we'd be looking at an interest rate between two and a half to three percent. Obviously, subject to market conditions when we price. In the short-term market, for the note, what we're looking at right now, rates have increased over the last few weeks, and so we're looking at a rate that's closer to 1%. So to your specific question, the WIFIA loan is a long-term rate that when we locked it in for thirty-five years, goes at a rate of 1.96% back in January of twenty, when rates were very low. The note, because it's a shorter-term maturity, it's only a one-year maturity, that rate is lower for the time being. But again, if that rate rose to a level where prior to pricing, it was not economic to sell the notes, i.e., our note rate was not lower than the WIFIA loan rate, then we simply would not issue the note.
Yeah, that was my question. Then I have another question. So the, the infrastructure money that we're hearing coming from the federal government, so is it possible that any of that money could be used to throw at this project, or is that to maybe reduce the amount of the long-term bond? Do we know? Have we looked into that?
So we did ask the EPA if we can, you know, increase the loan financing program, because now that the total cost has increased. But as the district's locked down to the fifty-nine million dollars, and probably take us another two years to kind of reapply again to add additional funding. And with the program that we need to start finishing the, on the original agreement, that we have to finish it within three years, there was just no time to reopen again another application with EPA, and we don't know where that's going to go.
I understand. Now, my final question is, do we have any idea what the ultimate dollar impact would be to a property tax owner to pay off the bond, if we're estimating what the range of the interest rates are, like per lot or per residence?
I don't think we're anticipating an increase to the stormwater tax. At least, staff hasn't come to me with that.
Yeah.
So there would be zero impact.
Zero impact, yeah.
Okay, I thought I heard somebody say earlier that they would be supported with taxes, property taxes.
Right, that's an existing tax.
With no increase?
No increase, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir.
President Powell, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm trying to understand the conversation, and I think I'm a little bit confused. Is the proposal that, well, let me ask this first. Have we drawn down on any funds from the WIFIA loan?
No.
And is the proposal that we would, that we would put that on hold and issue new bonds that seem to have lower interest rates, and that's what we're proposing here? And then the other question I had was related to the question that was asked about, is there any way that we could postpone this for about a year or so, just to see what materials costs do? And I think I heard an answer from David. I just don't know if he said, yes, we could maybe hold off for a year, whether he said no. I think when he said, he kind of referred to us somehow being locked into the WIFIA loan, kind of completing the project by a particular date. So if we're bound by the WIFIA loan agreement, then my question is, is there a way for us to get out of it?
I guess, if I may, to answer your question, Vice President Estrada, my recommendation would be no. I don't know if there's details in the WIFIA funding that would provide for it out.
No, I think we're too far into the project to kind of back off at this point. I mean, the need for these projects to continue. In terms of your other question, Director Estrada, about the two options, so the proposed fifty million, it is for the long-term bond financing for the So the proposed 50 million, it is for the long-term, uh, bond financing, for the additional costs, for the additional cost, um, that was incurred because of the, the race in construction costs. The other option is a potential one where this is just a short-term to take advantage of the low interest rates right now, uh, before we draw on the WIFIA loan in 2023. Um, so those are the two op, those are the two financing plans that are being presented today. So the long-term bond is to, um, bridge the gap of that additional cost. So that one we need to, to push through, to go through, to, to complete the project. But the second one, the short-term, is just kind of like an option for us if we wanted to take advantage of the lower interest rates now compared to when we did it with the WIFIA on a short, on a short-term, short-term basis.
Right.
Understood. Thank you for that.
So, so I'm trying to figure out how we got here. And most of the increases in the North India project, and it appears that that project was awarded, uh, at our September 14th board meeting, was Agenda Item 9E. I don't see anything, and I, the reason I went back and looked, because I don't remember this. I don't see anything in there that identified a 50 or more million-dollar increase compared to our estimates. And I don't see anything in the BAI on that. I, I don't, you know, and, 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 and you just, from our perspective, you know, these things come in bits and pieces and sometimes it's hard to connect all the dots. But, but with this item, it connected a lot of dots and it identifies this $60 million increase compared to our project estimates. And, and this isn't really a financing question. This is a, you know, this is how the thing was packaged, I think. I, I mean, it, it, it just doesn't, I mean, I don't see anything in that September meeting and I don't remember anything. And, and I think I would remember this. I mean, maybe we need to go back and look at the, the tape to remind me what happened. But I don't remember us ever talking about this project is $50 million more than what we thought it was when we originally estimated it. And, and, and you know, and it was 110 at the time, right? We awarded a Suket, which now it looks like it's more like 120, but maybe that's because there's other pieces that you're gathering together and putting into this request, this informational item. But, uh, you know, I did not get the big picture on this thing. And I had no idea that we had a project that we approved that was $50 million more than our estimate. I don't remember that ever coming up, you know, and that we would have to find some other means to finance this difference, this 50 or 60 million dollar difference. I don't know. I, I don't see it, you know? Help me out here. You know, and here we are now, we've already awarded the project.
Item nine, what?
14?
Item 14, item nine, Echo.
9E, yeah.
Yeah, I think at the time it was presented, um, correct me if I'm wrong, David, um, it was presented that it went up about a little, over 30-something million dollars, uh, because the focus at that time was the original cost from fiscal year 2022 to 24. So, but if you, you comprise all the total from when the project began in 2018 to the projected of 2024, it does come out to, um, the whole $55 million. But I think at time, it, it was focused was, um, putting it, the, the awardee to, to Suket Construction, I believe is the name of the, the entity, um, with all the additional increases. So at that BAI, it was competed at about $30 million from the original estimates.
Yeah, I, I will, um, offer to the board that on the top page four of the BAI, there is a breakdown on the funding for the project. It talks about the amount for the WIFIA loan, it talks about the cash and reserve fund, and it talks about 30 million in alternative funding, uh, being needed. I will, I will agree with Director Powell that the BAI doesn't specifically point out that the project, uh, to be awarded is over the government estimate. I couldn't really see in the BAI where we state what the government estimate was. It, it's a very involved BAI. There are lots of parts and pieces, uh, lots of support to Frontier Communications, IID, Southern Gas and Electric, or at least, uh, SoCal Gas. Um, I, I agree, it could have been more explicit, um, but I do think there was mention of the fact that there would be additional financing required.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I'm not disputing that. You know, it's this, because, because when you look at a project and you, you know, you go, you don't just do red light, green light. I mean, maybe there's a yellow light somewhere. So then the, the, the term I've heard before is value engineering. I mean, how do you find a way to get the job done without spending an extra 50 or 60 million dollars? You know, and, and you go into the detail in today's item and it's, it's all in construction costs. And I'm thinking, what is that cement? I mean, I, I don't know what, what's in there, you know? Rebar, cement, you know, moving dirt, maybe there's some form lumber forming and I don't know, you know, what's going into this thing? I mean, it's, how did it go so high? I mean, that is an insanely high number.
Listen, we have always under, under the, um, staff agenda report, under the fiscal impact, okay? Said in there, always that the costs have gone up, okay? And I'm not reading anything in here under the fiscal impact on that summary page that says that.
Going back to the September 14th.
Going back to the September 14th.
I don't know, I just feel a little...
This, 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 I mean, you guys know how I am. I mean...
Yeah, how did we get here?
Well, I, I have a question to Director Bianco's earlier question. Will, will this increase in fact displace other capital projects? Will this take out other projects that we had planned that we are not going to be able to do now?
Definitely. It'll just push them further down the road.
So, so do we know which ones those might be?
We're working on the upcoming budget now. We'll have a better sense of that as we bring this to the board in, I believe, March.
I mean, one of the things that we are trying to do is avoid, uh, in, increase to the stormwater tax. Um, we can only collect that at a certain fixed rate, uh, based on property valuations, which, you know, may or may not go up, which may or may not increase the, the revenue that comes in. The challenge to the stormwater fund is that these projects cost huge amounts of money. I think the backlog at one time of identified projects was $2 billion with a B. So financing was always going to be required. And so the timing of how we could accomplish the projects is more based on the rate of revenue we have coming in so that we didn't buy, burn down the money in hand and therefore jeopardize our bond rating to get lower interest rates on the projects we knew we'd have to do sooner or later. So unfortunately, in this particular case, um, COVID and whatever the market forces were at the time resulted in a bid that was much higher than staff had expected. I mean, you know, we try and do the best we can in estimating costs moving forward. Uh, I think it was mentioned that, you know, alternative financing would be required in order to deliver the total funds necessary to do this project, and that's where we are today. We're trying to figure out, trying to get the board, um, informed. I don't think we're asking for a decision here just yet, but you know, we are going to need more money. This is a proposal on how to get that money to be able to complete this project, not increase the stormwater tax. I, I think we all know that.
Yeah, and, and I'm not really questioning the, the financing discussion. I think it was well-presented and, and, you know, it's probably the way to go. I think, I think what we're all looking at is how did we get here and we didn't even know we were here? This is, this is a real concern, I mean, that I have. I mean, I know there's a lot of other things that need to get done out there in terms of, of these limited stormwater funds. I don't know. I, I mean, that's a, I've never seen anything like this. I mean, the 50 or 60 million dollar surprise, you know? And, and I don't think it was ever mentioned until today.
Well, as far as the, uh...
President Powell, I...
Sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I agree, I, I agree with David. I, um, I, I feel like I missed this. Um, I think I would have, you know, felt differently if, if we understood what we're understanding today back in, um, September. Um, I, I just, I, I agree with you that, you know, this is, this is the first time that I, that I get a sense. At least that's how I feel.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, obviously we're going to have to do a better job of explaining to the board, um, on projects like this as we move forward.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say, obviously I put the board item together for the September 14th, uh, board item. I was not intentional in leaving anything out there. I certainly got an expectation that there was going to be...
Yeah, no...
...a discussion, I didn't bring it up, which I guess is...
No, I guess, I mean, if you, if you went into this thinking it's a, you know, um, I know it was two different projects, so if you go, you have to piece it together. But let's say that you think it's a, well, we have it back here. Where, where is this? Get back onto today's meeting for this item, because it's, it's in your deal here. All right, so you thought the original estimate was 67 and, and, and you went out to bid, and I know there was other bids that were even higher. I mean, Granite was another 20 million above that. And Suket gets awarded, but the, instead of 67, it's another 50, almost 56 million higher. I mean, I would have seen that and said, oh my gosh, we've got a problem, right? And, and I never heard anyone say anything.
We, we knew the cost was going to be much higher before, before we put it out to bid. We had a sense that was going to be the case. We, like we said, we, we did engage with the WIFIA folks to see about updating, uh, the loan before we went and signed the contract on the loan because we knew that was the case.
Yeah.
I, I think we had communicated internally, certainly on that side. I think the failure appears is that it didn't, it didn't land on your...
Yeah, I mean, the, the table that's presented on today's BAI for this informational, that would have been useful information to have at the time. You know, it's, you had the information, why wasn't it presented?
When, when, when you read this fiscal impact, okay? Then, then as, as a director, you go through and you, and you go back to all the, the, the documents and you look for all the pieces to put together that explains this fiscal impact. And I don't see that in there. It doesn't talk about that at all. So why would I, you know, makes me feel like I'm not doing my job, but you know, when, when I hear everybody else is in the same boat...
Yeah.
Then, you know, I mean, it's...
One of those ones we would have noticed.
This is really unacceptable, really. I mean, I love you guys, but this is, this, this one is unacceptable. This is just something...
You, you see what I'm saying? If that, you see the little table in there that, on the, today's BAI, right?
Yes, I know what you're talking about.
You know, you know what I'm saying? That, that information was available in September, but it wasn't presented. As far as I can tell. I mean, maybe somebody said something verbally, but I don't, you know? I don't remember it. It is hard to piece it all together too, I'll be honest with you. You know, we get these budgets and there's a, this year and five years and there's, there's a lot of pieces. There's a lot of pieces. I mean, you look at the general managers' report and you see how many different projects are underway right now. There's a lot going on. And each project has a lot of pieces. So from our point of view, you know, imagine we're looking at this thinking, huh, you know, do you really get, do you see it all? You know, it's not easy to see. Okay. All right, well, this is an informational item. I, I, you know, like I said, I don't think the financing side of it is really, I don't think we're, I don't think we're arguing about that. I think it was well-presented and it makes sense. What was the total savings if we do this, this short-term fixed-rate note? I didn't pick that.
Sounded like about a million dollars. One was like 2.9 million.
So I, I just want to go back for, clarify, uh, a question that, uh, Vice President Estrada asked about, should we scuttle the WIFIA loan? No. Uh, and back when we got that two years ago, it was, it was like an unheard-of rate, 196, you know?
We had a guy come out and do a, a signing.
I mean, that was a triple A...
No, I, I was there, I was here, I, I get it, it's...
That was a triple A rated rate and even...
Yeah, if you're going to borrow money, that's the way to do it.
We're like, hey, this, these projects that are already been launched and we were, uh, at the time that the bids came in on the second project, our job was to, you know, figure out the best financing plan to pay for it. And that's why we're bringing this to you today unusually, as uncharacteristically is an information item, to prepare you because in the next couple of months, we're going to bring the real deal to you in, uh, private financing through the competitive bid process. But as, uh, Darren Hodge already mentioned, you know, we're anticipating those rates on the additional funding being around the two and a half percent range, or it could be worse. We don't know where rates are trending upward right now. So we're getting this deal done as soon as possible. We're hoping to have the stormwater additional funding closed by April. We'd do it faster if we could. We can't wait on, uh, any of the other monies, the other possible monies, uh, all the infrastructure money, you know, we're talking about, we're looking at all those possibilities, but, you know, most of it is in the form of loans, not free money, by the way. But even the, if it's lower-cost loans, these projects are launched, you know, we're going to, we accepted contractors, you know, we have signed agreements with contractors. And so from our point of view, we're just trying to make sure we have adequate money to pay for. So let's say we do get the best current estimate from our financial advisor of two and a half percent on the additional 50, uh, 50 million in additional long-term funds. That rate is still going to be better or not as good as the 196 WIFIA rate. So we stick with WIFIA. We don't want to get rid of that. The, to clarify, the 59 is all the short-term. This is a really a good news item in the midst of, you know, a very difficult item that we're going to play the market here. We're going to play the WIFIA loan. We're going to have a very low-cost borrowing for a couple of years, avoiding drawing on the WIFIA loan until the last possible minute. This instrument, which was this most outstanding rate we could ever imagine two years ago, is suddenly higher than what we can borrow short-term. So we're going to borrow everything we can in short-term and get this outstanding rate while we can. But we wanted to lay this out as an information item for you, as complex as it is, instead of just springing it on you in the next, uh, upcoming meetings as now we want you to approve this, you know?
Yeah, no, that, that's good.
Does that help?
Like I said, I, I, I never, I don't have a problem with the, the financing part.
Well, again, we don't want you to have any, uh, illusion about what we are doing. And again, when we bring these items to you in the next couple of months, have you say, wait, I didn't get that. So this is a good time to ask all these questions. And Director Estrada did have a good question about, you know, should we get rid of the WIFIA loan? But the answer is no.
David, I, I think the, um, the $2 billion number, uh, that, that I think you put together, um, to let the board know, uh, long-term after stormwater was done in 2017, I think it was done in my first year here, um, you know, that may, we may have to look at that to just give the board, you know, some more realistic numbers. It may be four or six billion from 2017. I don't know.
Yeah, we're looking at all this, I mean, honestly, you know, th, these, this is a pretty small area. I know this is Tennessee, but whatever, it's the same place. Hey, you know, because, you know, there's, there's, but, uh, some of our other meetings were, were, but this little, you know, this project is, I know it's really important, but it's, there's a lot of other large areas that also need help. Um, okay, well, appreciate the info. And I think we're seeing something that we missed earlier on the, on the overall project cost side. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
We have more informational reports. So this is the, this is an easy one, Zoe. It's just, it's just a schedule. Yeah, I think your schedule, it's the same every year, right? So we're, we're not going to be surprised.
Yeah, so, uh, good morning, President Powell, members of the board. This is just a very simple informational item. This is just a very simple informational item. Like we do every year, we share the schedule for preparing the engineer's report and levying any increases to the replenishment assessment charge. Just wanna point out two dates. We are starting early with the study session, planning to schedule that for the beginning of March, and then a public hearing to consider any rate increases would be the first board meeting in June. Some of these dates, particularly board study session, the general water policy advisory committee meeting, are subject to change based on member availability. But at any rate, we just wanted to make the schedule available, and while we're not asking for any action, we can certainly take any comments if you have any questions or any concerns with the schedule.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it looks like we have a placeholder for that meeting on March first. Useful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
And then we have another one with Scott Barrett, I believe. Come on up, Scott.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board.
Morning.
This informational item is on the agenda as a result of a customer communication, so I could run, kind of run through
Yeah.
the information that I have for you, and hopefully that'll address your questions.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Okay, so, the customer was concerned because he was denied a turf rebate. As part of our application process, we require pre-approval and pre-inspection before we'll grant the rebates, which can range up to twenty thousand dollars per resident. So, it's quite a bit of money, potentially. And speaking with the customer, he didn't agree that he should've been denied the rebate, but also, he was concerned that we didn't have an, he wasn't afforded an appeals process. In our regulations, we do have an administrative appeals section, which governs any decision made by staff, and that's a hearing authorized by the general manager. He typically, Jim typically delegates me that responsibility, and I've heard dozens of these over the last three years. And I think of those dozens, only one has gotten to the board, and that was a pretty significant canal customer who wanted to be reclassified, that you're probably aware of. So, I've informed the water management folks that, that pre-approval, that the application, the, I'm sorry, that the administrative hearing process applies to turf rebate denials. And going forward, we'll offer them the opportunity, customers an opportunity who are denied, to have an administrative hearing. And just to give you some context, we're talking about very few of these situations. In the last year, we've had four-hundred-and-sixty-six turf rebate applications. Only nine were denied because they didn't seek reappro, uh, pre-approval. So, it's about one-point-nine percent. It's a small number. We had four applications that were denied because they didn't have grass to begin with. So, it's kind of important that we go out there and do the pre-inspections. And customers are generally very supportive of this process, because they're interested in conserving water, and we get a lot of positive comments. And our water management team does a great job when they go out there consulting with customers. So, I get a lot of positive feedback on our program. And also, we, we grant a total of, just over, granted a total of just over two million dollars in turf rebates over the last year. So, it's a significant amount of money that we're talking about. Going forward, I'm proposing that we engage an internal controls auditor to review the rebate programs, just to make sure we have good processes and procedures in place, and also to ensure that there are safeguards in place to protect ratepayer money. And we're looking at maybe doing some community focus groups or surveys, customer surveys, who've participated in the program, so we can get their feedback on what they would like to see moving forward. But I think this was a, kind of an unusual circumstance, that a complaint got to the board, and we resolved it.
So, how was it resolved?
Well, so, we had an administrative hearing, and the issue was that, you know, we need proof that a project was, that there was actually turf at the site. And so, as part of that administrative hearing, the outcome was that we were gonna do a conservation review and a post-inspection at the customer's property that's scheduled for next Monday, and I'll be participating, and meeting the customer. And he also submitted plans to his HOA, which were approved before he did the work. So, we're gonna review those plans to confirm that, you know, just to confirm that there was turf being removed.
Yeah, I mean, I know this person, and, and I think there was some, maybe some confusion that he did get pre-approval, but it was from the HOA, and he's like, yeah, okay, I got my pre-approval, but it was from the wrong, you know, we, he needed, what he really needed was two pre-approvals. He needed one from us and one from the HOA.
Yeah, and I've gone back and looked at the communication, I've looked at our websites, I've looked at the forms that customers submit.
No, I, I get it. You know what I, what I'm, and I know there's a lot of people putting in, in turf, in, there's a lot of companies that do this for, you know, part of their business, putting in fake grass, or, or, or other landscaping.
Sure.
But, I mean, do these land, just, I guess I'm just wondering, why aren't these turf guy, you know, the fake grass guys out there pushing our program? Because we're basically subsidizing their businesses, you know? I mean, they, you'd think that they would be all over this thing, because it gives them a head start whenever they're trying to bid a project.
Well, we could certainly work with them if we're not already doing so.
Yeah, you would think. I mean, I, it'd be like, here, you know, the, your price is ten dollars a square foot, but you're gonna get two or three back from the water district if you fill out these forms.
Right.
And, I don't know, I, I mean, if I were running one of those businesses, I'd be all over that thing.
Agreed.
A part of what we saw during the last drought, 2015, is when there was quite a bit of interest in the community in turf replacements, these companies had more work than they could do. They would charge you twelve dollars a square foot for turf replacement.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the other issue was that during the last drought was that we ran out of program funding, so
Yeah, I was gonna ask, how are we doing on program funding?
Uh, we're doing, we're doing well. We're within our budget for the year, but, you know, and if, if we were to impose some sort of, you know, drought, not that we're going to, it's not on the horizon, but last time, we, we did drought penalties, and that drove the conservation programs, and, you know, we, part of the reason we have pre-approval is so that we can ensure that we have funding available to pay customers to do the turf conversion.
Yeah, I get it.
So
So, there's a chance this guy's gonna get his request approved, but, but he's gonna go through this, this review, this onsite review process, conservation on it.
Which he was agreeable to, and
Yeah, I think that's good, all right.
And he also understood the, the pre-approval, you know, requirement, because part of what we're trying to do is protect ratepayer funds and
Yeah, I get it.
so
You know, and there's a lot of good reasons why we require the pre-approval. I went down all the bullet points of, you know, to prevent fraud and all these things, and, and, and I felt pretty confident, knowing just a little bit about this specific, that, that, that those were, that this, he's not trying to game the system, it was just an oversight, that, that these, you know, that, that all those things we're worried about aren't
Happening.
in my view, a problem in this particular case.
Yeah, and I think what he did was use the online system as kind of a checklist, and kind of like went down the checklist, and
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so the, so these administrative reviews typically don't come before the board, and I guess that's good, that's fine, all right.
Hey, Scott, I have a question about the administrative review post-construction. Are, are you gonna look at decreased water use as part of that comprehensive review in terms of verifying that truly indeed the project did save the water it was supposed to save?
You know, in this particular situation, you know, the, it, it just happened in November, December, so I, I don't know how much, you know, opportunity there will be to review, but we will look at that. And I think going forward, one of the things I would like to do is kind of look at the effectiveness of our rebate programs and see how much, kind of look at before and after these turf conversions and other rebate programs, you know, what's the effectiveness of the water savings? And so, that's something kind of a study we'll be working on.
It should be significant. I mean, I, I personally did it several years ago at my house, and I saved an amazing amount of water. I mean, I, you know, and I always talk to people, I'm like, what's your water bill? You know, I always ask somebody, what's your water bill?
Right.
And they're, they're always like, oh, you know, a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty bucks. I'm like, why? You know, I mean, what, you shouldn't have it on three times a day all year long, you know? You should get a smart controller and program it quickly. And, I mean, even intensive landscaping, I mean, if, if you're doing it right, I think you can get your bill down, especially in the winter, down below fifty bucks.
Sure. Are there any additional questions, comments, concerns?
No, appreciate the, the attention, Scott. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks, Scott.
Ten, so we're into the action items now. Ten A award a professional service agreement to Black and Beach for warp-ten T-one filter improvement project. Hi, Armando, hey, gotta say, their, their little PowerPoint they put together was kind of impressive. That's included here somewhere. Is this, this is the one, right? Yeah. I'm not sure which attachment it is, but anyways, go ahead.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board, fellow staff.
It's a PDF.
As you stated, we have a recommendation for the board to approve the general manager's keep professional services agreement with Black and Beach for the design of the water rehabilitation plant number ten, T-one filter improvement project, in an amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight. We also have additional two approvals of project management, seventy-five thousand, project contingency of eighty-two thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-five. The total authorization request of eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-three. Would the board like a presentation, or do you have any specific questions?
What exactly is a T-one filter?
Awesome, great, great question.
I was trying to read their, their, it's not a PowerPoint, it's a PDF, but it's their proposal, and, and half the pages on the thing are sideways, and on my iPad, every time I turn it, it would turn, so I had a hard time reading it. But quickly, what's a T-one filter?
So, the T-one filter is basically our filtration facility. It is six basins that we put a rock, sand, and anthracite coal, and we put the influent that has already, has been erated and clarified through it, and actually, it has become tertiary of water that we can able, then disinfect, and then push out to the golf course community. So, it is key facility for non-podable water expansion to continue.
I mean, it sounds like you described like a sand filter?
It is, basically, that's what it is, a sand filter. But my daughter did a science project, I'm very proud of her, and this is, that's what she did. She took a two-gallon bottle, put gravel, put sand, and put coal, and created a sand filter.
Right. And, and so, this T-one filter, I noticed there's a little circle on the map there on the screen. It's, it's all within that, that little area there?
Yeah, it's everything very contained.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, while it has a small footprint relative to the warp-ten, it's already thirty-four years old. All the equipment there, whether you're looking at pumps, you're looking at the irrigation blowers, you're looking at valving, the valving is quite complex. It was made nineteen-eighty-eight. Electrical valving was not part of the norm in the construction industry, it was pneumatic valves. So, as one of our operators said it best, this facility is operating clunky, and it does not quite sink, and so, we have a lot of water hammers within this system, and these water hammers are then also making it worse by not having good operating valves. What may be more complex to those two acts, aspects, is the erosion has no control, it's just on, and so, we're
Oh, yeah.
blowing it. So, we're losing a lot of media. We're losing a lot of capacity. So, this project, the main purpose is to, is to reestablish reliability, recillency, redundancy, and capacity. We're barely making it by with the facilities.
Okay. Very well. Okay. Now, we're all afraid to approve any new spending. That's how I feel right now. Jeez.
If, if there's one project, this is the project you want.
Of course it is, of course it is.
It is a choke point for non-podable water.
Of course it is. You know, it makes me wonder, I mean, maybe we should make a standard part of these BAI's to say what we thought it was gonna cost, and now what is it really gonna cost? You know, especially these days with Yeah, I know. I know, but we, can we, can we make a point of that on all, going forward, just to, just to, so we know what we, you know, well, we thought we were gonna get it for seven-hundred-thousand, and it's really eight-hundred, I mean, that kind of thing, you know?
Absolutely, we could, we could make that modification.
Appreciate that.
Mr. President, so I'm in the process of revising the agenda and the BAI template, so if there is something specific
Well, that's specific.
Just add, I'll, I'll figure out how to
I mean, you saw the table on, on, on the information item from earlier, that little table on the BAI, right, on
Original estimate revised.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
Increased.
So, we'll incorporate, so we, I think our section currently is, is very small for the fiscal, so we'll expand that, so that staff is able to add more information, some type of table if needed, and so forth.
That is a great improvement, thank you.
And that'll probably be more prevalent in construction contract award rather than
Right. These days, I mean, it, it's hard to estimate, you know, because it's, it's a moving target. I, I understand how the costs there really are going up.
Yeah, our engineer managers, including myself, have had a hard time the past two years trying to predict where a project is gonna be, just because the volatility of the market, the business of the contractors, and just the shortage of labor. It's, it's just a perfect storm when it comes to pricing.
You got that right. Okay, so, is this coming in generally where you thought it was gonna come in?
This fee here
Is it on there?
It says exactly where we wanted to be. It's a good value.
Oh, yeah.
He talks about the cost of the proposal versus the cost of the construction. We want the range
Yeah, I got it, got it, got it. All right, perfect. Yeah, a little table, Sylvia, that makes it ea, makes it easy for us to find. All right, is there a motion to approve this extremely important T-one filter?
Thank you, President Powell.
I don't think we have a motion to approve yet, do we? No.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
I'll move.
That's Director Nelson.
I'll second.
That's Bianco.
Okay. I don't think we have any other discussions, so roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Armando, good presentation. Ten B, Dan, come on up.
Good morning, President Powell, board members. I'm here today to request your approval to authorize the general manager to execute the First Amendment for a track three-zero-seven-eight-four located in Thousand Palms. There was a domestic water and sewer installation agreement that was executed back in two thousand and five. As part of that agreement, the developer was required to provide the district with a well site, including construction of well site improvements such as a block wall, driveway, things of that nature. The current developer, Hidden Springs LLC, has requested that this requirement be waived. The reason why we wanted to implement this First Amendment was because this well site and the project is located in the conservation area. And as staff, we've reviewed the environmental documents, and we don't think there are the sufficient environmental approvals that would allow the developer to build on this well site, which has already been deeded to us. And so, that is how we came up with this First Amendment. I've been working with the developer over the past several months to come up with a way to move this project forward, so he can move forward with the development of this project. However, given market conditions, the developer has now requested that this requirement be waived in its entirety, and in fact, that the well site potentially be deeded back to him. As staff, our recommendation is to accept the hundred thousand dollars As staff, our recommendation is to accept the hundred thousand dollars in lieu of construction of, of these improvements, and this is based on bids that he has provided to us back in November, and that we keep this well site, which would allow us to potentially use this for mitigation for projects in the Thousand Palms area.
Yeah, no, that's fair. So I get keeping the site, but what about the hundred thousand? I mean, what, what are we gonna do with the money if we're not gonna build a well?
So, yeah, we would put that into our restricted reserves and use that to build on another well site in another area. It would be more beneficial for CVWD.
Buys down the cost, buys down our costs at a different location.
I get it, but, but is, so based on the restrictions that this, the property owner's facing on his own, right, he's not gonna be able to do what he was originally planning to do out there. I mean, if, if he gave, if he presented his current building plans, which are track plan, to us, would we still require the hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah. If, if he came in today, our ordinance has changed, and so he would not. But back in two thousand five, similar to many other agreements that we have today, this was the requirement as part of our ordinance.
And Mr. President, if I may add, I believe Mr. Graham, the individual, is in the audience and has requested to comment at the appropriate time.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. I'm trying to understand, so it's a bit of a fluid situation, this compared to what was then and what is now, I get it.
Correct.
All right.
I'd like to...
Go ahead.
I'd like to comment before we open it up.
Go ahead.
So I just, I just wanna clarify something because I, I think I asked a question, and I was a little bit confused by the answer as to what the requirement was that was being asked for back whenever we made, put together these conditions, and whether it was just the cost or, well, it sounds like it, it was the parcel and then improvements for the, for that parcel to drop in a well sometime in the future whenever it was needed. And then I had heard that maybe it was more than that, that it was a requirement to build a new well, and so that's, that's not what I'm hearing from Dan right now, so, so I just, I just wanna confirm that, that it's just the parcel and the improvements to the parcel, so that it's ready for sometime in the future for us to then put in a well.
That, that...
And that has a cost of...
Yes, that, that is correct, the requirement was to deed the parcel and construct what we refer to as a well site improvements. That does not mean drilling the well or equipping the well.
Sounds like a million bucks.
Just all these, the site improvements. And that was, again, part of the agreement that was executed back in two thousand five.
Dan, and is your recommendation that, let me just clarify that, that we keep the parcel but that we, we waive or we give back the, or, or that we collect the, the one hundred thousand and improve the site somewhere else because we can't drop a well at this site?
Correct. And, and again, the developer is here and I know he would like to address the board.
So, so under the new, you said that we have new, new rules now, that, different than what it was originally in two thousand five, right? So, is there an amount of money that would be required now? What would that be?
So what has changed is the requirement for dedicating a well site. And so just to briefly review that, back in two thousand five at that time, we required all developments to provide CVWD with a well site if they, if their gross project acreage was thirty acres or more. Over time, that has changed, even today, it, it changed effective January first. But keep in mind, CVWD has, has numerous agreements with these requirements, and developers are still approaching us to satisfy those requirements even today.
I don't think you answered the question about what we require today.
Oh, so what we require today is one well site for every one hundred forty acres of development. That was just approved and went into effect January first.
So if you're smaller than a hundred and forty, is there some amount of money instead of a well site?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. All right. So this is based on a prior requirement?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we know how many prior agreements we've got that contain, that were issued prior to January first?
Um, I'd have to say the majority of the agreements we have.
Which could be tens, hundreds, thousands?
Hundreds, if I were to guess. I mean, we're, we're currently dealing with another development in Indian Wells with an agreement that was executed in two thousand and seven with very similar requirements.
Yeah, so just a reminder to the board, under the GM report, and I didn't count them up, but there is a development services section that kind of highlights projects that have activity and projects that don't have activity. And that don't have activity section is really just projects that we haven't been asked about to do anything for in the last thirty days, in the last month. So, I mean, that particular part of the report goes on for, I don't know, at least twelve, eighteen pages. So there are quite a few agreements that we have in place.
I suspect a lot of the ones with activity probably have not had activity in the last month also, just based on some of the ones I've seen in there, they might not have got moved out. You know, so maybe what's different about this one compared to, let's say, the one in Indian Wells, is that there's this new restriction on the ability of the property owner to actually build the project that was subject to this requirement, right?
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know what's in Indian Wells, but I'm guessing they don't have that same, you know, it's not, it's probably not in preserve and it's probably someday gonna be able to do what they originally planned. Well, any other, let's give the property owner an opportunity to speak if, if that's what he wants to do. Come on up.
Yeah, looking through the general manager's report, there's actually thirty pages of projects.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, please.
Mr. President, microphone, a whole light turning on. Hello? Okay, my name is Tim Graham, and I am the, the manager of the LLC, Hidden Springs Court LLC. So I'm representing nine of us that inherited this property through foreclosure back in two thousand, after the two thousand and eight fallout, so we were lenders. We did a two, two point two five million dollar loan to the developer, which is the Thousand Palms Partners. Two thousand and eight hit, he couldn't finish the project, we foreclosed and, and took it over. So I am not a developer, so I've just kind of been managing this property for the last thirteen years. I've tried to sell it multiple times. I do have an offer right now at nine hundred thousand dollars, that's the first real offer I've had in thirteen years, so just to give you an idea of the value. Because part of the issue here is, and you guys have already touched on this, thank you for recognizing that this agreement went back to two thousand and five, and today we have a, a totally different situation. I mean, in two thousand and five, this property could have been worth like five hundred thousand per lot, and a well site for twenty-five thousand would have been, you know, a small percentage. Now, we're talking huge numbers, a hundred thousand plus a fence for another ten, eleven thousand, you know, based upon a potential sale at nine hundred thousand, it's just, to me, it's a financial injustice, okay? And, and I appreciate, Mr. Ruiz has helped get us to this point. His, his proposal was kind of based upon discussions that I had with him, it was better to at least pay for the well site than have to build an unnecessary well site, it just didn't make sense, that's where we came to where we are today, so I appreciate you getting us here today. But when I really look at what's going on, times have changed so much, and one thing I did not even realize, because I wasn't the developer, is that the multi-species plan took away the, the ability to even build the well site, not dig the well, just much less improve it, which I did not know, because I'd already spent about seven thousand dollars in a grading plan, I already started to process the well improvement process to which we, we can't even build, so that's how kind of ignorant I was of the whole process. So I had a whole bunch of notes here, and you guys can ask me questions, but basically, you've already touched on it, that this was a two thousand and five agreement that's out of date. Now I'm being asked, or we are being asked to write a check for a hundred thousand dollars, and I say, for what? An outdated agreement? It's, it's, it's really unjust. I'm happy to give you the land, which I don't even know if you really wanna own the land, I mean, you could use it for mitigation purposes, maybe somewhere else down the road. I'm happy to put a fence around there, you know, if you wanna keep it, but we can't, the multi-species, at, at the minimum, the multi-species plan wiped out the well site requirement, to me. So at that point, it should have been removed, but it wasn't. So...
Thank, thank you.
And this is actually the new buyer of, so that's why he's coming in, here's the one to potentially take this over and become the developer, so I know he has a financial injustice as well.
Oh, that's fair, all right.
So anyway, thank you for, thank you, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. So this, this, this First Amendment was negotiated between the parties?
Between the original developer named Woody Twight, Thousand Palms developers.
Well, to clarify, the First Amendment...
The First Amendment is the one we're talking about, right?
Yes, we've, we've been having conversations since about October, November, about trying to find, find a, a way to move forward.
Right, yeah. No, I, I'm sympathetic to this, this concept, but, you know, then you have this whole problem of, you know, what is the unintended consequence of making an exception and how many other of these sorts of deals are out there that, I mean, could really throw things into disarray?
Well, they would have to be in the multi-species plan.
Yeah, no, well, that's a, that may be a unique, I agree with that, okay.
So we just make sure I understand, you, you... Sorry, my mic was off. You, you negotiated a First Amendment and now you're coming in and asking for a different deal? Is that right?
No, well, kind of, kind of. When he allowed me to get to the process of like, the swell site is unnecessary, what a minimum can we just buy out the well site? And then that's when he said, yes, and he worked on that, but at that point, I realized the folly of my ways. I mean, so, yes, you're correct in that assumption, but then it was, it was no sooner, in fact, he could probably verify that, no sooner than we discussed the hundred thousand, I said, do you think I can, you know, try my case to not even pay for this? And he goes, that's up to you, if you wanna send the letter, send the letter, it's not something that he had anything to do with. And that's why I sent the letter as soon as, as soon as we figured that out.
So, so what you negotiated was, was a better deal than the two thousand and five deal, which would require, what, a million dollars? I mean, what would that one require? I, I guess I'm asking Dan.
Sure, President Powell, to clarify, the, the requirement in the two thousand and five agreement was to provide the site and construct the improvements, which include grading the site, bringing in power to the site, building a wall. So there was no drilling required as part of this agreement.
So it's not a million dollars?
Right, so it's not a million dollars. It's just the, the actual civil site improvements.
Right, got it.
As part of that agreement.
Good.
And, and the concept was since the, since he could not, or we could not get the environmental approvals today, it would be far easier just to have him pay us a check, and as part of our ordinance, that is allowed in certain cases, and so that's where, where this discussion came from.
So now you're still able to build homes on this site, just not, just on a smaller footprint, right?
And that's, thank you for bringing that up, yes. Originally, the forty acres triggered this, the well site, or the CB, the, the multi-species plan cut us down to one and a half acre lots inside a five acre envelope. So we only literally have eight lots of one and a half acres each that is buildable.
Right.
Which is another reason that the well site should have been...
Yeah, I get it, okay.
And, and also, I mean, there's, there's nothing but government-owned conservation land and fish and game land all around there for at least a quarter of a mile or half a mile in all directions, there's no houses that can be built to the south, to the north, or to the west.
So what is the explicit request that is before us today relative to the well site?
So staff's recommendation again is to allow the developer to pay the one hundred thousand dollars and put a chain link around the site. The developer, however, has requested that that requirement be waived.
And dedicate the well site to the district.
Or keep the well site.
Which already does own the well site, by the way, you guys do own it already legally.
Yes.
You're on title.
I feel like I just don't have enough information on what the repercussions would be if we were to go all the way and, and, and waive the, the payment. I, I don't have a sense of that, you know, not, I know what the implication is for you, but I don't know what the implication is for all these hundreds of other agreements that we have.
So you won't need the water, because you're, if you're gonna build, even though it's a larger lots, right, you're still gonna need...
There's city water there, there is water there.
There is water there, there is, there's CVWD water there already.
Mm-hmm, yes. And you have a well site a half, a quarter of a mile away on the corner of Ramone and Amite, just to the south of, that's, that's there.
Right.
And just to provide the board with more information, CVWD has always required well sites from developers based on gross acreage. Obviously, we're not a land use agency, but in general, that is the way that CVWD acquires well sites so that we can develop and drill on those and provide water obviously to new developments. So that is the basic foundation for, for this requirement, which is in effect today, albeit it's a different acreage requirement.
Right, okay.
All right, I understood that gross acreage is a hundred and forty acres now?
Yes.
Okay, so, which I have, well, is my gross acreage forty or is my gross acreage twelve? Because I can only build on twelve, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I wanna hear, yeah, I appreciate your, appreciate you guys coming in. I'd like to hear more, I mean, maybe we need to bring this back, I, I'd like to hear more about what, what these other agreements are, you know, that, that if we did this once, we may find ourselves setting a precedent.
Is somebody, somebody wanna...
Bring it over there.
Oh, it's Jeff.
I don't know, it, it may be, it may be me, President Powell, but I, I agree with you, I think we ought to bring it back with some repercussions of the, of the decision. Although, I, I, I would say because of the limitation on the buildable acres that they have now, is, 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 you know, my inclination is to just keep the property, don't require a fence, and, and let these guys move on. But I would like to hear about the repercussions and go from there.
Yeah.
President Powell, I...
Go ahead.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of of the same thinking as Director Nelson, I, I, I think it is important to recognize their buildable acreage, being that they're restricted by, I believe it's conservation. But, yeah, I wanna hear more about the repercussions, such that I, I, I agree with, in general, with Director Nelson, just, you know, to, to get some, some value that they...
Yeah, you get what we're saying, so we're sympathetic to the, to the cause here, I mean, I think it is a major change, you know, put a set, put a new set of eyes on this and, and really let us know, I mean, what, you know, if we were going to waive the hundred thousand dollar requirement, what impact might that have on these other agreements we have?
Sure, in terms of number of agreements.
So that if we do it, we, we're at least formed of what, informed of what the consequences might be.
Okay.
So let me ask staff then, do you think you can have that information for the next board meeting in February? The first meeting in February, second meeting in February, first meeting in March?
And I'll remind you, the deadline to get that to me would be Thursday.
I would say...
If you're gonna say the eighth.
Look behind me and...
Second meeting in February?
Second board meeting in February.
Peace.
That's taunting.
That's not...
No problem, he can get it done.
Okay, well, thank you guys, thank you for coming in.
And also, when you come back, can you be very specific about what the actual request is gonna be? I mean, frankly, I'm ready to act on this today, so I'm not sure what additional information that you're gonna bring back is gonna make a difference in our decision, but just please be explicit in what you're requesting and hopefully you'll have consensus from the developer team as well.
Well, I, if I may, just to clarify, I think he was pretty clear... Well, I, if I may, just to clarify, I think he was pretty clear in what he was recommending. It's just there has been a more recent development with a different ask.
Right.
He negotiated an agreement, now he's asking for a different deal.
Right. The agreement, the agreement was what was brought forward.
Correct.
And, and now the input from, I get it, it's, it's different.
The request was from me and not from Dan.
I, I just feel like we're in a position where staff's not prepared to support that, and I need to understand that a little better.
Okay.
Because I think the board's pretty sympathetic to this idea of let's, let's waive the, the money.
Okay.
All right.
Great, thank you.
So find a way to support it. Or if not, well, give us a reason, right? Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. 10C PSA with Q3 Consulting, Thousand Palms. All right, that's this little map that you guys, yeah, there we go. All right, David, good morning again.
Good morning again. Purpose of this item is to authorize the general manager to execute a professional services agreement with Q3 Consulting to provide engineering, design, and environmental services for the Thousand Palms Channel Improvement Project. The Thousand Palms Channel is the final link in providing a path for flood hazards to reach the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel and ultimately the Salt and Sea. It is downstream of Sun City Shadow Hills, which is what you see right here. We did a, we developed a preliminary design report, a feasibility study, last year to take a look at some alternatives or some options and then take a look at the capacity of the existing channel. The channel was built in 1967. Right now, it does not have the capacity to convey the 100-year flood. In fact, it was modeled to cause a breach near the top end there, which would flood the communities to the east side. And so the proposal, or the alternative, the most effective, least costly alternative selected as part of the PDR would be to keep the channel a line, an unlined channel in terms of the invert, but to line the slopes and to provide for erosion control both underneath the Interstate 10 for the bridge piers and for the outfall at the confluence with the CBSC there. The total cost of this request is $1,043,756. It is budgeted this year, this current fiscal year, for $100,000, not because we thought it was going to be $100,000, but because we had anticipated to start this project toward the end of the fiscal year. However, we've been slowed up on one of the other projects, which is the one we're asking to perform a budget amendment on, and we saw an opportunity to go ahead and get started on this project. And without, I'll take any questions.
Is there a map of this?
There, there is a map. It's, it's, it should be on the screen before you. Unfortunately, somehow it did not make it onto the agenda. I'm not sure how Sylvia distributed it this morning, but it is, it is on the screen.
I believe copies were distributed. Each board member should have one at the dice, but Director Nelson is remoting in. So it should be on the Zoom screen for those participating via Zoom. Please let me know if you can't see it. I, I keep getting nods up here, so.
So those, that land's already been acquired, huh?
Yes, this is all CBWD line.
I know, I look at my county records, it says Bureau of Reclamation.
Oh, oh, yeah, I might have missed, yeah, I think that is Bureau.
I mean, is this, is this a project because the costs are so high right now that we should just back off for a little bit?
I would say no on this one. Again, this is, this is on the downstream end tying the flows that are upstream from North Indio that we're building. And we will, once that project is completed, we will have the capacity to receive flows from Sun City Palm Desert coming out of Thousand Palms, convey them into Sun City Shadow Hills, and they'll leave someplace to go. And if this channel does not have the capacity, that would be an issue.
But this is the downstream part, right?
Yes.
So, so, so we're not going to build the downstream before the upstream, right?
That's, that's correct. Right now, we would be building North Indio flood control, which is upstream. And, and this ask here is just for design. We'll have a solid sense of what the costs are. Right now, the preliminary cost estimate for this is 18 million with a 15% contingency.
So figure 40.
Which was your number a while ago?
No, no, this, this 18 million comes off of our preliminary design report.
Let's write that down.
Okay.
The cost, if I may, the cost does include improvements to Avenue 42 there, which I, I intend to at least try to work with the City of Indio for some cost share there, as they have a low-flow crossing that comes across there and they stand to benefit for the improvements.
Looks like it also hit Madison.
Yes.
All right, well, so we're looking for a motion to approve this item?
Mr. President, I do have quite a few of attendees, so I just want to make sure that we don't have anybody on the line that is on the line regarding this item. So for those attendees on Zoom, if you would like to speak to this item, please use your rate, the raise hand feature.
Really?
What could they be on the line for?
It's large, too.
That is a lot. All right, let me know.
Okay, I don't, so we're gonna, I'll assume that none of the attendees would like to speak to this item. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
I'll second.
Okay, Director Nelson. Hearing no further discussion, let's do a roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Okay, pass the five out. Thank you, David. All right, here's an interesting one. 10D Elmer, good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, President Powell, Director Elmer Alex, Assistant Director of Engineering Services and Planning. The item I'm presenting to you is to authorize the general manager to sign the Necessary Riverside Local Agency Formation Commission documents to facilitate the stormwater development to be annexed from the Coachella Valley Water District to the city of Coachella in accordance with Riverside LAFCO rules and regulations. I have a presentation here for you really quickly. Go through here. So I'll cover a little bit about the project location and background, kind of review the boundaries for you, and kind of do the project findings. If you recall, this was brought to the board previously in September. The stormwater development is located off Dillon Road, north of Interstate 10. It's an unincorporated riverside and it's just located kind of northeast and north of the city of Coachella and cities of Indio. The project is approximately 818 acres and is proposing 2,750 residential units and 300,000 commercial, retail. Recapping the project progress, like we said, in September, the board authorized staff to initially begin sewer flow transfer agreement negotiations with the Valley Sanitary District for the purpose of providing sewer service for the development. If you recall, the project will be provided domestic water by the Indio Water Authority. This, the transfer to Valley Sanitary District was primarily due to the lack of CBWD-owned infrastructure in the area. In order for the development to be, to reach CBWD infrastructure, the development would need to construct over 24 miles of pipeline and two to three sewer lift stations just to reach Water Reclamation Plant 7. So in October, Valley Sand and the district and the developer, we confirmed the sewer treatment capacity based on development. However, along the way, we investigated some sewer alignments and pipeline capacity, and Valley Sand reports insufficient capacity to, in their existing pipelines. They would, they would have asked the, the stormwater development to construct a new pipeline, which would need to be constructed underneath I-10 and the Coachella Valley, Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel, including one sewer lift station. The development reported in mid-November that they approached the city of Coachella, possibly for sewer service, and that developer reports that the city of Coachella has available capacity in their existing sewer mains and their water reclamation plant. In addition, the developer reports that the city of Coachella would require annexation to the city of Coachella. They have, I have included their letter from the developer regarding this project. Any impact from LAFCO fees will be paid by the developer and city of Coachella. I believe the, I have the development team available on the Zoom call, and I'm also available if you have any questions on this item.
Okay, thank you. You know, my question is just, are we, are we creating an island in there between Stone Water and, or other areas? I've been guessing between Stone Water and Coachella there, there's what, all that other?
My understanding through LAFCO is they would have to do some kind of annexation survey between the property they're developing and where they're annexing to to try to have some level of connectivity. They don't really like any islands, island formations.
All right, so that's a, that's a LAFCO decision, that's not up to us.
That one area would have to be annexed also.
Probably, you would think. So that's something LAFCO looks at? Yeah, but I guess we don't want to be, we don't want to have this area in the middle where we're, now we don't have enough density to ever serve if it's our responsibility.
It would be really difficult for us to service that area. Like I said, it's around 27 miles of pipelines and three lift stations to get to our, our facilities.
I get it, but, but the same thing, so is there anything we can do about this, this potential island and make sure we don't get stuck with that later? Because it just seems, you know what I'm saying?
Correct.
I'm guessing we, I mean, I don't know who serves that area, I'm guessing it's us. If it is. Well, I don't think it's gone to LAFCO yet.
It hasn't gone to LAFCO. We wanted to approach the board of directors and see that before we actually go down to LAFCO and start processing fees and applications by the developer.
Yeah, I would expect that LAFCO looks at this and they would move the city's boundary to encompass the entire area south of Stone Water, and the new boundary is then just north of the Stone Water Development.
Because most likely the infrastructure would be in place along Dillon Road, so they would have to be serviced.
Right. I mean, that, that would seem like a, if, if it's going to happen, I think you need to do the whole thing.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, we would have, we.
It seemed like Coachella put in a fair amount of, of infrastructure there to handle sewage on the, on the, on the, I guess that would be the east, east side of the 86 and over in that area, kind of on a regional basis. And it would seem kind of prudent for, to look at just how much capacity they have in terms of, you know, could they take, could they take, you know, this project and, and some part of that island? And then, and then we determine what the lines are based on what their current capacity is and what, what would have to be built out in the future for that, that future demand.
So my prior experience with LAFCO, they will have to, City of Coachella will have to show for that areas to be annexed, that they have full capacity, both in their pipeline and their treatment plants before annexing. So they would make that determination and show that to LAFCO.
There you go.
That's areas that we have in agreement with Valley Sand where we service, that's actually in their service area, so.
Yeah. It's where it makes the most sense at the time, right? I mean, they, okay, you know, I'm curious if Vice President Estrada has any comments on this? You know, you're there?
Yeah, I'm here. I, I don't, I don't have any comments other than it seems like LAFCO has the process in place that I think would answer a lot of the questions that we're asking, so I think it might be good to just go through that process and see if it, if it makes sense.
So if there is a concern about a potential conflict of interest, Director, Vice President Estrada, as a governmental employee receiving a salary as a governmental employee, that wouldn't constitute a material of financial interest. The only concern would be if you've been involved in this project or would receive some benefit from having seen this project through. Is, are either of those circumstances present here? Director Estrada?
I, I, I've seen portions of this project.
Is this a project?
As it, as it's come to the city, but, but I don't, I don't make, I don't make the decisions on behalf of the city.
Okay, is this in your department?
This is in my department.
Okay. But because you're not receiving any financial benefit or interest other than what you normally get as a salary governmental employee, there's not a, there's not a FPPC conflict of interest. For the sake of avoiding any, even the appearance of a conflict, you may want to recuse yourself from, from voting on this, but once again, as a governmental employee receiving a governmental salary, that is, that is exempt from the conflict of interest rules. I just wanted to provide that option to you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Jeff, and I, I think we, we've talked about this in the past, and I don't feel that I'm receiving any benefit from this project or that I'm performing in any other way as I would perform at the city. And again, these are decisions that are being made by the policymakers at the city, which I'm not part of.
Okay.
Good, yeah, thanks for the clarification, and I do appreciate the input. So is there a motion to approve the, this item?
Should we ask?
Oh, maybe there's, yeah, maybe there's somebody that wishes to speak, I don't know.
So for those in attendance, again, via Zoom, if you would like to speak to this item, please use the raise hand feature. We do have one.
Okay.
Okay, so I will move over. We have Jeff Patti. I will go ahead and move you over, and Jeff, you'll just need to unmute yourself. And you can start your, you'll have three minutes to speak, Jeff.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Jeff Patti. I work with ASG Development Advisors. I was engaged as a consultant by the owners of this property a little over a year ago with the express intent of help them develop a plan for future development of the property. And I think one of our primary focuses was determining the service of utilities for the property. And quickly, we realized that sewer was going to be the most challenging of those. So we work with CBWD staff as well as Valley Sanitation District staff and more recently Coachella staff to try to solve this problem, which the CBWD staff report noted, you know, quite excessive infrastructure improvements that would be required for this property to be serviced by CBWD, which are not financially feasible from a development standpoint, nor staff has indicated to us, nor desirable for CBWD to maintain that level of infrastructure that's only serving one project at this time. So we believe we've, you know, worked in good faith with staff, trying to determine the most feasible option and also one that's hopefully acceptable to CBWD. And at this point, we really do believe that the annexation into Coachella for provision of sewer service is our last resort, our last. of sewer service is our last resort, our last feasible resort and option. So we ask that you look favorably upon this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commenters? All right.
It does not appear we have any additional requests to speak at this time.
All right, and staff recommends that we go forward on this approval, this authorization. So is there a motion to approve this item? Somebody?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that passed 5-0, thank you, Almer. 10E, Jeffrey Keel. Hello again.
Good morning, again, President Powell, members of the board. So this item is asking for approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of sale and issuance of short-term notes relating to six domestic projects, which are on track to be funded through a USDA loan. Really, what you need to understand, the reason why we're doing this is because kind of one of the ridiculous features of this loan program is that they do not fund, they do not you do not close the loan until the projects are completed. So we have we have to do the work in advance, and we have to fund it in advance, so that's what we're doing. The good news is that just a few days ago, we received our first ever rating on the domestic fund, and that came in at double A+, so that was very good news.
That's good.
Darren Hodge, our financial advisor, still with us to help answer any questions, and Doug Brown, our bond counsel, is going to be available also if there are any questions. But I just would note that all end costs, the total interest cost is noted for this short-term note is estimated to be 1.31%. Eventually, we are hoping that the USDA loan will come in at 1.1%. So I'll turn it over to Darren, do you have more you'd like to add?
That's that's good, all right.
That's good.
Darren?
Thank you, Jeff, this is Darren Hodge, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, so as Jeff mentioned, the notes here being proposed for the construction of certain projects that listed out in the AI, three booster stations, a reservoir, and a number of main replacements. As Jeff mentioned, the district is in the process of negotiating a USDA loan, and as part of the feature of the USDA loan, as Jeff also mentioned, the USDA loan can only be drawn upon once the project is complete, and so we have to provide the construction, the interim construction financing. So if the USDA loan is secured and executed, these notes would provide that interim financing construction, so that once the projects are complete in their construction, USDA loans would be anticipated to be drawn upon to fund the maturity of the notes. Now, once the notes are issued, if the USDA loans are not entered into or executed, these notes would still provide the interim construction financing, only at the maturity of the notes, the district would be required to fund the payoff of the notes in one form or fashion, most likely long-term fixed rate bonds at that time in 2025. So going back to the USDA loan itself, once the USDA loan is entered into, one of the things we will need to remain cognizant of is that we would anticipate drawing of the USDA loans to pay off the notes at maturity. Currently, we're anticipating that to be June of 2025. There are conditions to being able to draw on the sale of them, so similar to what I talked about before, if the conditions to draw have not been met, then at the maturity of the notes, the district would need to pay off that maturity in one form or fashion, either with additional interim financing until the conditions to draw are met, or through long-term bonds at that time. In terms of the structure of the notes, what we're currently contemplating, we do have the ability to, within the resolution, to sell two different series of notes, but currently the current expectation is to sell just a single series of notes in the amount of about $35 million with a maturity of June 2025. To provide some flexibility, we're also going to incorporate a one-year call date of June 2024. And what this allows for is that you'll see some of the projects have substantial completion dates of September 2024, and so if those projects are completed on or a little bit ahead of schedule, if the USDA loans for those projects are drawn upon, we would have the ability to redeem a portion of the notes prior to their maturity and save some interest costs. The the other aspect that I would mention is that there are a handful of projects that I know that the substantial completion date of those projects is still somewhat in flux, but they are longer than our current expected maturity date of June of 2025. And so if those projects are kept to their current schedule or they are delayed, again, at the maturity of the notes, we would be required to either pay off the maturity through additional interim financing or the issuance of long-term bonds. Now, the reason that we sold these, that we're proposing selling these bonds with a June of 2025 maturity, is that a common feature under bond legal documents is the idea of excluded principal. And so essentially, all this means is that for the next five years until maturity of the notes, the way we're structuring these is in a way to avoid having to account for interest and principal on the notes for purposes of calculating our rate covenant and additional bonds test. The reason that we're proposing doing this is because that provides us additional financial flexibility over the next three years to fund additional projects that may or may not require debt financing, and just gives us additional flexibility over that time. As Jeff mentioned, we've also included a table here with the characteristics of the financing. The par amount of the notes we're anticipating issuing is about $35.2 million. That will fund approximately $33.5 million of projects. We are including capitalized interest, which is being funded through no proceeds of about $2.3 million. The reason we're doing that, again, is to avoid having any interest costs during the construction timeframe, and our TIC on this transaction currently is anticipated to be about 1.3%. If this is approved, the the schedule that we would contemplate is posting of the preliminary official statement tomorrow with a pricing next Thursday, February 3rd, and then the closing the following Thursday, February 10th. And with that, I'll turn it over to Doug to go through the various documents in front of you for consideration.
Good morning, board members. What you have before you today for consideration is a resolution which authorizes various legal documents and delegates to your president and your general manager the authority to complete the transaction. Section one of the resolution approves an indenture of trust, that's in effect a loan agreement. It sets forth the terms of the notes. There are no new financial covenants for the domestic water system included in this indenture. Your all you are doing is agreeing to comply with the financial covenants that were entered into in 2018 when the master resolution was adopted. Second document is continuing disclosure certificate. As we talked about in connection with the Oasis financing, once you finance in the public credit markets, you're obligated under federal securities laws to provide an annual report to the market comprised of your audit and then also some additional information that's financing specific. You currently have a continuing disclosure obligation with respect to the Oasis project and therefore annually disclose information about the East Rack system. Once this financing is done, you will also have to disclose certain annual information with respect to the domestic water system. Section three of the resolution authorizes the notes and delegates authority to sell them to the president and your staff, but only at an interest rate of 2.5% or less. We've included an attachment, which is the notice of sale, which Darren indicated would be published and distributed to market participants who would hopefully be bidding on these securities. Section five authorizes the preliminary official statement. As we discussed, in connection with Oasis, document has two purposes, it's a marketing document that the potential bidders will review to have a better understanding of the district and the drinking water system. It's also a federal securities law document. The district has an obligation to provide accurate and complete information about the domestic water system. We've worked with your staff and your general counsel as well as your financial advisor, and this document is in substantially final form and would be ready to send out to the market tomorrow, assuming the board authorizes it today. US Bank is continued as your trustee. You there is a section authorizing the purchase of municipal bond insurance, if that were cost-effective, given the rating received by the drinking water system, double A+, it's unlikely that there would be any financial advantage to buying municipal bond insurance. And then finally, section eight, under the government code, you're obligated to disclose to the general public a good faith cost estimate of the financing. So that good faith cost estimate is attached as a exhibit, and that was prepared by your financial advisor and your staff. So approving this resolution authorizes all these documents, and as I said, delegates to the president and the general manager authority to complete the transaction. So happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Impressive how quickly it all moves.
Yeah, it'll go quick. Mr. President, I'll move approval.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Good, good presentation. I'm not hearing any questions or comments, if so, let me know. Otherwise, we'll go to the vote.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Yes, President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
That passed 5-0, all right, Jeff?
Thank you.
Signatory.
Very briefly, so we're simply adding Assistant General and Manager Jan Charlton to the list of signatories for everything bank-related.
Is there a motion to approve that? I'll move. Second? Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Okay, that passed 5-0. Good, board comments and reports, why don't we start with Director Nelson?
I don't know, I haven't any comments this morning, John, thanks.
All right, Vice President Estrada?
No comments also.
All right, Director Aguilar? Let's get through this.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just have one one comment and request perhaps, and it relates in part to the conversation we've had today about these capital projects and and funding sources and costs and so forth. And what I've I've noticed is that in the staff reports frequently, many of these capital projects, for obvious reasons, transcend two fiscal years. And what it would typically say is that in the source of revenue is identified for the first fiscal year, but typically what it will say in the second year fiscal year is that it will be included in the budget, but there is no source of funds identified. So I'm wondering if that could be added in future staff reports?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good comment. Director Bianco?
No comments.
Thank you, yeah, and none none for me as well, so let's get into meetings, January 8, Water Education for Latina Leaders.
Yes, I was able to be participate in that, it was it's a good program, I think Costolo might even be on their board, but in any case, there are about 20 individuals from across the state that are new or newer in public roles, and they're on a process to learn about water, and so they did an interview of me that Saturday, and they had great questions, and it was about an hour, it went really well.
Thank you. The January 13 DBBA meeting, we had a board meeting, we've installed Todd Hooks, who's with the Agua Caliente tribe as our new president of DBBA, which is pretty cool, and just kind of interesting, they they've had a long-term idea that they want to be part of the National Association of Home Builders, and it looks like that is moving forward, so that's a big kind of a big part of that. It it's it sort of puts them on a map in a more official way, which is good. Anyways, January 18, study session, we had, I think, four of us there. January 19, disadvantaged communities, Vectors Estrada and myself, Castello, you want to take that?
Sure, our typical bi-monthly meeting, we held it via Zoom this time just because of precautions to the COVID, and we went over our our general project list related to water, sewer, and and other projects, and I I think in general, we there's been a lot of good updates, a lot of momentum and progress on a lot of projects, including Avenue 66. I think I think, you know, one of the takeaways, you know, that's that's such a significant project, and one of the takeaways was that we're getting closer to our funding agreement with the state of California for some 20-some million dollars to to kind of complete that project. I know that we heard that we are working with the Assembly Member's Office to try to commemorate some sort of check issuance, given that they provided $7 million for that. But in general, just a lot of a lot of good progress, and just want to thank staff for their support, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see, the 20th, we had the DBBA luncheon, which was an opportunity for the folks from National Association of Home Builders who flew out here from various places to address the group, and it was very, very good presentation. You know, it's still the whole thing is about affordability of housing and how there isn't any such thing. It's really a challenge for them. January 21, meeting with Berger Foundation, we we had a good meeting, Director Bianco, and, you know, they're they I know they want to make changes to some of their some of the flood plans out there, but it may not be feasible in terms of the practical side of getting things done in a timely manner, so we'll see what they how they want to go forward on that. If you had anything to add, Anthony, yeah. Other meetings, I had, actually Castello and I had one yesterday, we met with, they had the principals meeting on the Agua Caliente litigation, so we had we were both there, and Chairman Groby and Kristin Blumer were also there, meeting in Rancho Mirage. And again, this is an opportunity for the principals to find ways to, if possible, to resolve our mediation on the water lawsuit lawsuits. I know we're going to talk more.
President Powell?
Go ahead.
I had a number of meetings.
Go ahead.
Okay, on January 8th, I had a meeting with Pueblo Nudo and representatives from some of the recent mobile home parks that were identified by EPA as having quality issues. I I don't know if you recall seeing an article in the Desert Sun about a month ago or so, where the EPA identified additional mobile home parks that have similar issues as the Oasis Mobile Home Park, and I think they're trying to address that. issues as the Oasis Mobile Home Park, and, and I think they're trying to address that. These parks are in the vicinity, we know that we have arsenic issues in that area, so folks wanted to hear about progress being made, or who's working on projects, or just kind of wanted to get a sense of, of if anything's being done, and so we, we kind of met to kind of convey that information. On January 7th, I had my interview with, with WEL, and as Director Nelson mentioned, this is a group of newly-elected officials, council members, county supervisors, school board members, water board members, that are on this program right now, that are, they go to six different locations across the state of California to learn about different water issues in different areas, and, and see if there are similarities, or how folks can work together, so their first visit was here, in the Coachella Valley. I believe that their next visit is going to be somewhere in Kern County. But they interviewed me also to just, you know, hear about what we've been working on as it relates to our efforts with consolidation projects, and so that's what I did that day with them, and there was also a reception that I participated in. On January 8th, and I do want to thank Director Nelson for taking the time to always participate, I know that he's done it at least three times now, I think the group really enjoys his, his insight and his knowledge on, on the issues that he covers. And to answer his question, yes, I was asked to be on the board for them this year, so I committed to being on the board with them for this year, so that is something new that I'm helping out with, helping the group out with. On January 8th, I also spent some time with, with WEL, I took them to the canal by Box Canyon, just to kind of give them a sense of, of the valley floor, and, and the amount of agriculture that they have in the District of Coachella Valley. I think you, you get a really nice view when you, when you go Box Canyon, right there by the canal, by the gate, you're able to kind of see down from the slope. And then from there, we, we made our way down to the San Jose Community Center, which is a, a community center that's operated by the Catholic Church, and so we, we worked with the Catholic Church to use that space, and the folks that, these 20-some folks that visited us, also were able to walk around some of the mobile home parks, and, and visit some of these units that have these under-the-seak arsenic removal filters, and, and kind of, you know, hear firsthand from some of the residents that live there. That was on the 8th. On the 11th, I had a practice run for a panel that we were going to have on the 13th, it's a group called the Environmental Science Associate. So we had a practice run for a panel that we were invited in, and that panel actually happened on the 13th, and the panel was called Making Ways, Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion in the Water Industry. And these folks somehow have heard about our efforts as it relates to consolidation projects, and they really wanted to hear about our progress, kind of our story of how we, you know, how we initiated this, and, and what we're doing, and, and just wanted to hear about our efforts, and so Armando Rodriguez, our sanitation engineer manager, was part of the panel, our water engineer manager, Dan Reese, was part of the panel, and myself, and we had a lot of help from our government and regional affairs coordinator, Victoria North, so I want to thank them all for being part of that, I think it was well-received. I think they did a great job, and our efforts, me being recognized by, by others, so, so thank you for that. And that, and so that, that panel actually happened on the 13th, the 11th was, was a practice run. And then on January 12th, I had a second meeting regarding the additional mobile home parks that were identified by EPA, but, but this time, we were, we were joined by the Assembly Member's Office, and, and that was the meeting that I attended, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other meetings that we need to? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported?
I'll make a motion. Second?
Second, roll call.
Yes, President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
5-0, okay, general manager report.
Yes, sir, just the COVID update, right now, we've got 22 current qualifying cases, we've had 206 recovered, two mortalities, we've got, right now, we've got 14 direct contacts, we've got 35 folks off work. For the month of January alone, we've had 85 qualifying cases. Just to kind of recap, we still have not had a major outbreak, which is 20 or more cases in the same work area in 30 days. We have had a number of outbreaks, as you might imagine, which is three, three cases in 14 days. As far as the vaccinations go, we have got about 416 documented proof. We have not put in place a policy, we're still waiting to see what the federal government will do. I guess recently, a court in Texas decided that the federal government did not have the authority to require federal employees to be vaccinated, and I suspect that'll wind its way to the Supreme Court eventually as well. Nothing new, the stay for federal contractors is still in place, and that's what we currently consider ourselves to be. That's all I've got, sir.
Thank you. Counsel report?
And I have no report today, Mr. President.
Thank you, do we have any department reports? Nope? Good, well, at this time, the board will recess into closed session, discuss the items on the agenda, we will reconvene here to report out after, after the closed session.
President, I met on item 13B, and there was no reportable action. 13B and C, and no reportable action.
Right, so, but he said, we, so we, open session is reconvened, we have, we only discussed 13?
B and C.
B and C, and we have no reportable action, and here, no objection, we're adjourned. Now you can go.